... group of people that showed up yesterday from the mayor to Warren Christopher and a variety of other people, Mr. Cooley. The dilemma that we run into is none of them have ever rioted in the city of L.A. The issue that we have to be concerned with are those numbers and those subgroups that express discontent. Those are the ones that if we ignore discontent are the ones that will act out in the community. I don't know how many were available after the Devin Brown shooting to be in front of Bethlehem in church and see people just in complete outrage and looking to create a real disturbance over that shooting. Those are the people that we need to be addressing and those are the people that don't seem to get to these meetings.
All right, note and file them. And a second to go, Mr. Smith. So that'll be our first vote. If we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That will be noted and filed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and thank you.
On Wednesday, May 2nd, your Los Angeles City Council considered a motion by Ed Reyes that asked for a report from the police chief concerning the incident that took place at MacArthur Park during the immigrants' rights rally on May 1st. Saying community leaders are very concerned, Mr. Reyes describes the incident and why the rally took place.
I wanted to approach this constructively. This is about bringing peace in our neighborhoods. It's also about learning from our mistakes. It's very disconcerting to see what happened last night, knowing that there were children, there were families, there were folks who were out there trying to give an American message, a message that says that the communities, all communities regardless of race, color, income group, should be treated with respect and they are fighting for their justice. It's as basic as that. But when you have a situation that deteriorates to the degree that it did, where some people fell into harm's way, we need to figure out how we prevent these types of incidents from occurring again. In speaking with the chief, in speaking with the chair of public safety, in speaking with my colleague, Jose Wezar, who also has a large immigrant community in his district, it is very clear that the leadership in the community is very concerned as to how this transpired. We need to give them answers. We need to give them a venue where they can vent. We need to understand how we can enhance our relationship with our men and women in blue. They are outnumbered, they are outgunned, and we need to provide a level of information that provides confidence and support so that our women and children, our families can be safe in every neighborhood in the city.
Saying this city council, along with the mayor, will get to the bottom of this, council president Eric Garcetti speaks of the right to assemble and openness.
A free media is the cornerstone of our democracy and it is important for us to protect that. Two, the right to assemble is also a cornerstone of our democracy. And three, we had over 5,000 LAPD employees who were out yesterday, close to 5,000, the most we've probably deployed at any given time, including during the Los Angeles riots. And we had up into the point yesterday evening, 25,000 protesters and close to 5,000 police officers without incident. And that is very important for us to not only say but to recognize the important work of those that were assembling, to hear their voices heard on, as Mr. Reyes said, the matter that was really at hand and still remains at hand long after we resolve what happened last night at the very end, but also for our hard-working city employees, not just police officers, but firefighters, street services, and other people who assisted in protecting that right to assemble. The third hallmark of our democracy though is openness and I want to thank the chief for, this wouldn't have necessarily triggered the involvement of the police commission or the inspector general because it was not a categorical use of force, which is either life-threatening or serious permanent damage. But nevertheless, it is a hallmark of what we do to say that this will be an open process so that we can be as thorough in getting to the bottom of what happened and whether the policy that was engaged was proper and whether it was something that should have been undertaken. Was not just police that we need to look at investigating, we ask members of the public who were either attacked by members who were looking to provoke at the end of these marches yesterday and rallies, as well as those who may have had interactions with the police department. As we conduct this investigation, your input will be critical and we will be releasing those numbers later today to help people out with that. I know one march organizer who was attacked by one of the provocateurs himself and got a bottle to the head, as well as some of the members of the press that we saw in very stark video yesterday. This city council, together with the mayor, will get to the bottom of this. We appreciate the opportunity to hear that report back as the investigation proceeds and I want to thank the chief and Los Angeles Police Department for stepping forward to make sure that we do this in a thorough and as deep manner as we can. But again, that right to make sure that our friends in the media can have their jobs protected and done in a safe and democratic way is important, the right of people to assemble and not to be intimidated by anybody, whether that's in official capacity or whether that's private individuals, we will continue to protect that.
District 3 council member Dennis Zine makes the request to have the command staff that was in charge at the event to also appear in front of the city council in addition to police chief Pratton to answer questions as to what led to the confrontation between police and demonstrators.
I'd like to add that the chief of police be directed to bring the command staff that was in charge of the location, MacArthur Park. I don't know if it was deputy chiefs, commanders, captains, but there's a command staff structure that's in charge that gives the direct order on what to do and how to do it. You don't see officers running around with ballistic helmets and bean bags and dressed with the face shields on a routine basis. So in addition to the chief of police, who I don't know if he was there or not, I know I was not at the site, I don't know if any of my colleagues were at that site, but I think it's important that the command staff that made that decision be here to answer our questions. The police commission, the policymakers, it's fine to have them here, but we need to discuss this with the individuals who gave the order to disperse the crowd and how to disperse them and what weapons the officers are going to use or not use. I think it's important that we find from their state of mind, the chief can talk from his perspective, the police commission can talk about policy, but we need to interview and be able to question whoever was in charge as the incident commander to find out what led to that situation which brought that confrontation between the police and the demonstrators.
Saying this is not your father's LAPD, District 5 council member Jack Weiss declares that we're talking about a small number of people at the end of a very long day.
And it is very clear that we have a chief who is determined to get to the bottom of it and get the facts out immediately. We have an LA, this is not your father's LAPD. It is not your father's chief. They are responding quickly and in a desire to get all the facts out right away and I very much appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that the motion that has been put forward does not prejudge what happened in any way. It does not prejudge the actions of any LAPD officers. Indeed, colleagues, as you well know, this rally yesterday was something that the LAPD and various city departments had been working on for months. Hundreds and hundreds of city personnel have worked very hard to make sure that what happened yesterday occurred and occurred appropriately. So clearly, we're talking about the actions of a small number of people towards the end of a very long and busy day. But as our council president pointed out just a few moments ago, there is, it was an American rally that happened yesterday. There is no more American right than the right to assemble, than the right to protest, than the right to report the news. We want to make sure that this is a city in which those rights are continually protected and cherished and that's exactly the purpose of your motion, Mr. Reyes.
District 14 council member Jose Wezar says a lot of goodwill has been built up by the LAPD, but admits he was disturbed by the events that took place at MacArthur Park.
First and foremost, I want to thank and commend the thousands and thousands of people who were out there in a very peaceful demonstration throughout the day that given the circumstances, it was a peaceful demonstration and unfortunately, it happened to end up the way it did. And unfortunately, given that there were similar marches throughout the country, that Los Angeles was the only one that got the national news that something like this ended up on our streets. I want to also say that what we saw last night in the video clips and what we're hearing about, you know, a lot of goodwill has been built up by our LAPD. It's becoming a bit more diverse and in fact, one of the priorities of our chief for this following years is to build better community relationships. However, last night when I saw the news, I did cringe. I was disturbed to see families running from officers, to see babies being held in their arms as they ran across a dirt field, to see journalists rolling around on the dirt and then a camera being kicked. That is not what Los Angeles is about. I am pleased to know after discussions with our chief that there will be a forum by which people can come forward, express themselves, provide witness testimony so that we can have an airing of these issues and ensure that something like this does not happen again, that our policies in these types of situations are reviewed, examined, and improved and that if anybody did deliberately move away from policies as to how they're supposed to conduct themselves, that they are held accountable. And similarly, anybody who provoked these incidents, that we get them, bring them to justice because as we all know, sometimes in these situations, it is a small number of people who actually provoke these types of situations.
Madam clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. Twelve ayes. Thank you. That item's been approved.
On Friday, May 4th, council members met at the Van Nuys City Hall and Ed Reyes gave an update on the MacArthur Park incident that happened in his district.
We are doing everything within our power to address what has happened, to correct it. The chief has come forward, has been very transparent in his approach. The FBI is now involved. We're doing everything within our capacity to address this. As you know, several elected officials have already converged on this issue. As we speak, I believe somebody, Fabian Nunez, is at the park trying to bring back a sense of confidence to our community that we can use this park. My office is working diligently with the nonprofits and all the community organizations and have matured and evolved since the riots of 1992 to address some of these social ills and our economic hardships and reaffirming that this park is a place for families. So I just want to make sure we understand that when this blows over in a week or two, in a month, or whatever it takes, that we still need to work together as a community with our officers who are trying to protect our families from the gangs, from the drug dealers, from the prostitution and the illegal vendors that essentially lower the quality of life of our great city, of our great neighborhoods, of our great park, MacArthur Park. So I ask for that type of cooperation for the future of our community. Thank you very much.
Of course, Council Weekend Review will bring you updates on all council action on this issue. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at 213-473-3978. And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall or by calling 213-978-1046 or of course by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending May 4th, 2007. On behalf of Wendell Ayala and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching and please join us for the next Council Weekend Review.
Good morning. This is the Los Angeles City Council. It is Wednesday, May 9th. We meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays here in the City Council, starting at 10 o'clock. All meetings are open to the public. And for those of you who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised on Channel 35, or you may also view it by visiting our website, which is www.lacity.org. I would like to ask Councilmembers Weiss, Wesson, and Zine to please make their way down to the City Council, so that we can begin our meeting. It is now 11 after 10:00. If they could please make their way down to Council, we can begin our Council meeting. Good morning. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Alarcon, Cardenas, Grolhan, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendale moves. Mr. Smith seconds.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Those have been approved.
Madam President, first items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings, Items 1 and 2, the applicant consent's of continuance to June 6, 2007.
Great. Item 22 will be continued to June 22nd, excuse me, you said?
No, I'm sorry. That's Items 1 and 2, and it's to June 6.
June 6, thank you. Also, if we could hold on the desk, Item #11, we have a motion that we will be circulating. Colleagues, any... Okay. Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is Item #3, and that's a public hearing item. It's finding a public convenience or necessity in Council District 9, and I believe there is a card on that item.
There is. That item will be called special.
Next items are Items 4 through 11, and there's a request to continue Item #10 to May 16th.
That will be continued.
And on Item #9, the report has been submitted and distributed to the Council members, and I believe on Item #11, there is an amending motion.
That is correct. I don't know if it's been distributed yet. It is not. We'll hold that on the desk.
And then that would leave before Council, Items 4 through 9.
Thank you. And I'm being reminded, this is our first Tuesday, although we did do it last Tuesday, didn't we? Wednesday. Because last... Yes, Mr. Zine, I mean, Mr. Zine, excuse me, Mr. Smith is reminding me we need to do the flag salute. So you get to do the flag salute today. If I could ask everyone to please rise.
Because we weren't here yesterday. Because we weren't here yesterday, we missed the flag salute. So if you'll please repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for making sure we didn't forget. Madam Clerk.
And Madam Clerk, that is, 4 through 9 is before Council.
Colleagues, are there any specials on 4 through 9? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next, yes, Mr. Weiss. 5 to be sent forthwith. Thank you. Next?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 12 through 28. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item #12, our commissioners, do you wish to hold that on the desk? And I believe that would be along with 48 and 65, which is in the special meeting, which Council hasn't gotten to yet.
Yes, we will hold those on the desk.
And then that would leave before Council, Items 13 through 28.
13 through 28. Any special... Mr. Alarcon?
Actually, I'd like to continue Item 27 until Friday.
27 until Friday. Any other specials?
And there is a card, I believe, on Item #26.
There is a card on Item #26, so that will be called special as well. No other specials. Madam Clerk, open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Next item, Madam President, is Item #29. That's a closed session. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
We will hold that on the desk.
Then that would take Council to the continuation agenda. Item #30 is a presentation. Do you wish to hold that one on the desk?
Yes, we will hold that on the desk.
Next items are items noticed for public hearings, Items 31, excuse me, and there's a request to continue Item 32 to June 27th.
That will be continued to June 27th. We do have a card on 31, so that item will be called special.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 33 through 47. 10 votes are required for consideration, and on 33, there's a request to continue that matter to May 15th.
That item will be continued. We do have cards on Item 46 and 48. Any other specials, colleagues? And we also want to hold 47 on the desk for amending motion. So 46, 47, and 48 will be called special. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Next items on the... Are items for which public hearings have not been held, Items 48 through 63, and 48 is being held on the desk. That would leave before Council, 49 through 63, and I believe there are cards on 55 and 58.
Yes, there are. Any other special, colleagues, specials? Mr. Reyes.
55 is already special, given the card, so, thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Just wanted to ask for 34 to go forthwith.
34 to go forthwith. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Can we hold 56 until the committee report is distributed?
Hold it on the desk until it can... Okay. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
President, I'd like to ask reconsideration of Item #19. I have an amendment, some language there.
Okay. When we finish these items, we will go back to IT and ask it to be reconsidered and called special.
And I'm sorry, for clarification, Mr. Parks was asking for 56 to be held?
To be held, yes.
I believe the committees waived that.
I thought it was a report from another committee. We waived it from Budget and Finance, but I thought it was Housing Economic Development.
HCED also waived.
Oh, there is no report? Okay, thank you.
Does that mean you'd like it to go forward? Or you want to hold it on the desk?
Yes, I thought there was a report coming.
Okay. 56 will not be called special then.
A non-report, okay.
Thank you. Any other specials? Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Next items?
Madam President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting?
Please. Before, excuse me, before we do that, can we reconsider Item #19 for it to be called special? So, Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
That will be held, it's all called special. You're welcome. Madam Clerk.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grolhan, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business.
First item on the special meeting agenda is Item 64, and that's a special presentation. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please.
And I believe 65 and 66 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and 65 is a commissioner that's also being held with the other Measure L, Compensation Review Commissioners.
Okay. And we do have cards on 66, so we will call special Items 64 and 65.
And then do you wish to continue those items to the regular meeting?
Please.
Do you wish to recess the... Excuse me, adjourn the special meeting?
We will adjourn the special meeting.
And do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Thank you. We will take a public comment. I just want to make sure there were a couple items here noted for forthwith. Item 20 had also been noted forthwith. Did we get that as forthwith? Item 34, I think that... I think there was a couple of the commissioners as well that we will do. Okay. Thank you. We will now have public comment. Would ask, call the first four cards, and if we could, there's quite a bit of noise today in the chambers. If we could please ask one, if you do have conversations, to please take those conversations outside the Council chambers. Skye Anderson, Melrose Larry Green, Lucille Caruso, and Zumadog.
Hi, I'm Skye Anderson. I've been the resident of Los Angeles for seven years. I have a TV show that plays into Hollywood at 11:00 PM Thursday night. First, I want to talk about what happened on May 1st in MacArthur Park. Three years ago, you couldn't walk in MacArthur Park. It was filled with drug addicts, drug dealers, and gang members. It was not safe. Today, it's safe enough to have an immigration rally there. I live in a very fine hotel on the edge of Skid Row. The Madison Hotel is very well-run, but five years ago, before Mr. Bratton became the police chief, you couldn't walk out the door without seeing drug dealers exchanging cocaine and heroin and crack pipes. Sometimes a crack pipe would be more numerous than cigarettes. Today, I can walk out of my hotel, and none of that is there. San Julian Street used to be filled with people partying all day long on drugs. Today, it's safe to walk down San Julian Street to get in the Ball and Jizz of America. Another thing I want to talk about is Abraham Lincoln wanted to have a prayer day. He would get down on his knees when he felt that everything else had failed, he had no place to go, and all this wisdom and all the experience had failed him, and he'd get down on his knees and cry out to God for help. But as far as Mr. Bratton concerned, he has one fatal defect. He does not have a good system for disciplining his officers. Mr. Parks had that defense. Mr. Parks knew how to discipline his officers. I got angry at a police officer giving him a ticket for walking against a red light, and he just, he knew I was angry, and he didn't do a thing about it. He just, "Okay, you're angry," and he walked away. That isn't the way it is with Mr. Bratton's officers. They're arrogant, they think they have all this power, and they live in fear. And they need to adopt Mr. Parks' system for disciplining their police officers. They don't have an easy job. They live in fear, they have to tell people what to do, but they don't want to hear them. They put people in prison, they give them tickets. It's a very tough job, but they need somebody like Mr. Parks to tell them how to discipline these police officers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melrose Larry Green.
Good morning, folks. It was a very tumultuous time now in the city of LA. It's no time for levity or jocularity. It's a very serious time, and I live in the 4th District, and I'm so proud of my Councilman Tom Labange for the tremendous leadership he's been showing in the fires in Griffith Park. Right here is the picture in this morning's Daily News, Griffith Park in flames, and I think at this time, we must all realize that as bad as this terrible fire is, the LA Fire Department saved countless number of lives, including my life, and millions of dollars worth of homes in the area. And I know all of you in the City Council, once the fire is out, will take steps to make the parks even safer than they are now, but I just want to offer all of my personal thanks to the firefighters and the police, and of course, our mayor and Councilman Labange. I'm sure they didn't sleep much last night, and Tom's probably out there right now with his yellow coat on, and I don't want to even talk about the other events. I just want to say very, very briefly, your innocence has proven guilty, everybody has their right of due process, and I hope that everybody on City Council, from Parks to Perry to Weiss to Wesson to Gruel to Garcetti, and all of you, takes two to tango. My old man used to tell me that. He passed away many years ago. Takes two to tango, and I think Ken Hahn and Tom Browde and all the other great people that have preceded all of you in the reins of governing this city. And let's make no mistake about it, no offense to Mayor Vierigosa, but this horseshoe runs the city, and I come to you as a very humble bipartisan Melrose Larry Green. Let's all keep a level head until May 30th. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I know that both Tom and Erica are up there now. I heard Tom brighten early this morning on the radio. I think he was probably there all night, and our thoughts and prayers are there for the firefighters, as well as the residents who have been evacuated in that community.
You know, can I have a...
Yes.
I too wanted to respond briefly and just thank Melrose Larry Green for mentioning Tom Labange. You know, he was not just, you know, out there at the press conferences. Tom was literally directing where resources should go for that fire. Tom knows Griffith Park like the back of his hand. He's grown up there since he was seven. It was heartbreaking to watch him, knowing how much he really loves every inch of that park. And one factoid that I was also glad to hear last night, Station 38th, Station 38th from Wilmington actually was directed to help save the merry-go-round up there. So, you know, fire departments, fire stations from all over are coming to help. I understand from other cities are coming to help, so... But yeah, you are absolutely right. Tom Labange is out there, he cares about every inch of Griffith Park, and is doing a really, really fine job in leadership with this fire.
He did.
A quick second, in agreement with Ms. Hahn on that. I just left Tom a message a couple of minutes ago, telling him we love him and we miss him here, but we know that he has walked and hiked that area more than any of us in the city, and when I heard the Dante spot was gone, I know that was one of his favorite spots, so that we can rest assured that whatever can be done, Tommy's providing leadership with the mayor for all of us, and we love you, Tommy, and we're with you.
Thank you. Ms. Rosendale. Mr. Parks, did you mean to push your button?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Thank you. And we hope and anticipate he will be able to come back this morning and let us know how things are going there in the park, but he has been there, I think, all night. Our next speaker, Lucille Caruso, followed by Zumadog.
Good morning. I'm really nervous, pardon me.
That's okay.
I read this article about social workers to save kids from Skid Row, and I was reading it in Gloria Malina, and that name struck a bell with me because I recalled emailing her in 2005 about a GR case. And it had to do with male tampering and identity theft regarding two cars that I had in another state. The plates were... Everything with it. So the rules under GR said you can't have two cars, but it didn't talk about identity theft, it didn't talk about where the car... It didn't give me enough verbiage. So I challenged a decision because the denial from 63 Special was going on denials with this male tampering. So I emailed the government, and they said the GR program is one of the few public assistance programs in this state for which we have no authority because it is strictly county-operated, and that your remedy may not be available. And then I never received notice of action letters, and I want to make it short because I only have two minutes. The bottom line is, they wrote to this Bryce Yoko Mizo about the hearing to listen to what I was saying. Then it says that they didn't act upon it 15 days after receiving requests, and so the denial went in operation of law. And it goes through all this paperwork where nothing gels. And so what it does is, it's... I'm one of, I don't know how many homeless people, but it stops not only my money flow, but it stops economic money flow for the states. I have to buy things, and everybody makes money from what I'm spending, and I don't know how to rectify it. And I said, "Why is this all goofy with all these addresses?" And then I phoned...
Sorry, we do have a two-minute limit.
That's okay. I said what I needed to say.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Zumadog.
Yes, thank you, City Council. I'm here today with a very heavy heart, first of all, because of the Griffith... all, because of the Griffith Park Observatory, my condolences to Tom LaBange, I feel like condolences are in order, I'm not being disrespectful, I feel terrible about the situation. However, yes, there's things going on in this horseshoe that are causing a lot of people across this country to take note. I know that there, somebody sent me a document about fraudulent permits that were issued at Burnell Hill over a six-house project being built, and there's a complaint with the Building and Safety Department over that. There's a lot of shadiness, I'll go as far, for the first time, to say, I am seeing signs of corruption in this city. Planning Department, I think they're on the radar, I think there's very powerful people from not even in the city or state that are looking into things. Boy, these nonprofits like Prop K, oh my goodness, there are so many loopholes in that thing. The stuff with the nonprofits, I wonder how many board members of people sitting on these nonprofits are getting paid $60,000 a year salaries, I wonder how many names I would recognize from these organizations, and, man, I really do, people, this is Zuma Dog, I'm a public advocate, I've been taking information from people all over the city, I blog on Mayor Sam, and you can go look for more on that, people are sending me way too much information. I'm spending time at the Federal Building, running case some reason into the computer, people send me more information, I'm just saying, I think I'm going to come down to City Hall very soon, and there's going to be a padlock on the door, and they're going to say, closed till further notice. This is scary, it's scary for me to come here and say this information, people are sending me way too much information, I'm here to say, I'm hearing words, that there's multiple investigations into the things going on at City Hall, and it's citywide, planning departments, nonprofits, Mount Washington, Burnell, there's so much more to come, Zuma Dog.
Thank you. We go out to the Valley, Miriam Fogler.
Yeah, Zuma, you shouldn't cut back, because you need to be spoken here, and we cannot just continue to go on just having hearings and, you know, the items, you say there are not to be, no public, open hearing council, it should be all of them, even if, even if they're heard in committee, public hearing, because a lot of people can't make it to the meetings, such as me, I'm disabled, and it's very hard for me to get around. And secondly, that I came down here because, this is important to let you know, that you need to have open access to people to speak, and have freedom of speech, you can't limit it to even non-agenda items, because this is, this is a free country, we're supposed to have a right to speak what we want. Of course, I understand that everybody has a chance to speak, I understand the time limit, okay, and I know you guys are working very hard to make sure that everything is being done, but I know that Zuma Dog is saying something very well here, because there's a lot of development going downtown, and I don't like it, because I know there's, some people tell me they want to see some greenery downtown instead of just seeing all concrete, and it's all because it's the big almighty dollar, and I don't like that. I'm having the echo going on here, I can't see where you people are listening to me, because it's very important that you people understand, because I know some of you are very, you know, could be nice people, some of you are very friendly, and, and I know Eric Garcetti, you know, I, I just want to let you know that, you know, you guys are out there helping about Griffith Park, and I want to see the Los Angeles Police Department, the Fire Department getting their pay raises, and the city workers, the 501, the 771 getting what they should be getting, the cost of living call up, and also, the, the medical benefits should be increased, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Now we have Arnold Sacks, Nathan Bernbaum, Yvonne Michelle Autry, and Oscar Johnson. Mr. Sacks. He's coming.
Good morning, councilmembers, I'd just like to speak about three things, unfortunately, you can't, don't have a chance to rebut some of the things that go on in council chambers, but I'd like to speak to about an item that was on April tenth agenda regarding the Transportation Committee relative safe schools, safe routes to schools with the federal program, and later on, there was a charter, some information regarding charter schools, and I was wondering, since the Transportation Committee mentioned something about having to put new signage up for schools, would they also be responsible for putting up signage for charter schools? Is that under their domain? And who funds that? Also, I'd like to talk about something that occurred last week regarding a commission's report to haul, to create a route to haul some fill from the Hollywood Hills, and how that if it wasn't okayed, we'd be, the city would be taking people's property. Just the same day, in Rancho Palos Verdes, there was a ruling by, that a court upheld the city council's ruling to deny permits to build on an earthquake fault zone because it was unsafe, so there is no, what needs to be answered here is the fact that safety versus the property rights is, should be a major concern, and not the, not the fact that the people have some money to spend. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Oh, I have twenty more seconds. Now that the, I guess I don't have.
They had you cut off there. Nathan Bernbaum.
Good morning, councilmembers, Madam Chair, if I may distract you for a moment with some information on important arts and culture event going on in Los Angeles, I'd like to invite you all this Saturday to a fabulous arts event at the, on the waterfront in San Pedro. It's sponsored by the Port of Los Angeles and produced by Angels Gate Cultural Center. Excuse me, I'm Nathan Bernbaum, Executive Director of Angels Gate Cultural Center. Much of the event is a family festival with live music and food, kids' arts activities, and skateboarding events, and skateboarder art exhibition, but the key feature is a series of artworks commissioned from LA artists for installation in shipping containers, which, which is really a wonderful, fun, and unusual way to center a festival. From seven to nine PM, there'll be an artist reception, it's beautiful on the Channel at night, you've got to come down and see what a fabulous resource our port waterfront really is. The commissioned artwork, by the way, is funded by the Port of Los Angeles very generously, and the Department of Cultural Affairs, the festival is also supported, we've got terrific help from the Council District Fifteen, Councilwoman Hahn and her staff have been fabulous, the Department of Recreation and Parks is playing a big role too, and local businesses have also invested in this festival. So I invite you all to come down on Saturday, either during the day or for the evening event between seven and nine PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Hahn.
I just want to, just say, thank you for coming down here, and again, this is art on the waterfront. You know, Los Angeles has a waterfront, and it's the harbor, it's the Port of Los Angeles, and, you know, we've been experiencing quite a heat wave lately, we actually do have a bit of a cooling trend down, down on the waterfront, so come on down, art on the waterfront, it's a great idea, last year, there were thousands of people who attended, it's a great opportunity to do something with your family, it's unique, it's creative, and besides enjoying the wonderful creative art, you will experience what goes on in the main channel of Los Angeles, which is cruise ships, container vessels, we have the largest fireboat in the world, we have tugboats, it's, it's instant entertainment, so come on down, enjoy art on the waterfront. Thank you, Nathan, for coming down and inviting everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Yvonne Autry.
Sure.
She'll be followed by Oscar Johnson, Alma Romero, and Ray Lasota.
Thank you for an opportunity to address the Los Angeles City Council, I was supposed to be in attendance yesterday with Los Angeles Community Action Network, however, I was unable to attend, hopefully, they were able to address you regarding the continued battle to maintain affordable housing here downtown. I was born here forty years ago, it's been available, all of a sudden, because of developers and because of the financial, you know, because of the money that's being invested in downtown, I find that Los Angelinos and people that have used and availed themselves of this housing, now, our housing is threatened, and I think that's unfortunate, again, this is America, it's still a democracy, it's not an oligarchy or an aristocracy, that means that we have rights as well. First and foremost, we will not be displaced, we will not be homeless, and I'd like your attention, please, I know you have other things to do, it's very rude when you disregard our comments or speakers that are addressing you. We'd like, again, to make sure that the moratorium is in place, we'd like to make sure that the affordable housing is maintained for those that need it, and if not, that we want to secure the receipt of relocation fees. Also, I'd like to state for the record, it almost seems as if America has waged war against the poor, especially black people and people of color, I don't know if they've secretly gone back to slavery with this New World Order, and it's an economic as well as a racial issue, and I just want that on the record, because if it wasn't for God and people that helped me because of covert police activity, or other cabals or organizations that are, I believe, financed by the federal government, I would be homeless. Some people that are labeled undesirable, we all have a right to affordable housing, and we'd like to make sure that our rights are protected.
Thank you very much for being here. Oscar Johnson. Oscar Johnson.
Good morning, my name is Oscar Johnson, I'm an actress for the homeless in Los Angeles, and I see how the city of Los Angeles is exploiting the African-American homeless people with cleaning up their city with Chrysler, that Chrysler Union don't fear should be ashamed of themselves to hire homeless people to do their work, to clean up Los Angeles, I think that should be stopped, and we are in a very bad case in this country with race and law, something should be dealt about, it should be represented more better through the law, and that governs us as citizens in this country seem as though we're written off, and our, and our business down on Crenshaw and Forty-third, we're getting too many barbershops down there, it begin to be a haven for a hangout, and that McDonald on Forty-third and Crenshaw should be closed up, and it's just a haven for people that should come in there, and I guess, do the wild thing all day long with nothing to do, and Clifton Cafeteria have been a very bad haven, and a race profile against African-American peoples to be in there, and seem as though our economic race has been a big issue in the last twenty years with us and America in trying to make a change, and I think our troops should get out of Afghanistan, Iraq, and bring the troops home, and impeach President Bush, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Alma Romero, followed by Ray Lasota.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Alma Romero.
Good morning, my name is Alma Romero.
Yo trabajo por el Hotel Westin Lux por siete años de recamadera.
I've been working at the Westin LAX for seven years as a housekeeper.
Hoy en la mañana, las nueve de la mañana, veinte empleados del Hotel Westin han sido suspendidos por usar este botón de union.
And this morning, around nine o'clock, twenty employees have been suspended for using the union button.
El número de suspendido va a incrementar durante la mañana porque muchos más empleados están usando los botones.
The number of employees suspended were raised during the morning because more employees have been using the button too.
Esta es una actividad protegida por el NLRB.
This is a protecting activity by the NLRB Act.
El año pasado, el hotel suspendió a treinta y nueve trabajadores por la misma razón.
Last year, thirty-nine employees were suspended for the same reason.
Queremos que el dueño del hotel pare de intimidar a los trabajadores que pelearon fuerte por el salario digno.
We want the owner of the hotel to stop intimidating employees who fought very hard for the living wage.
Nosotros los trabajadores les pedimos que hablen con el dueño del hotel, el señor Chris Naceta.
We ask you to call the owner of the hotel, Chris Naceta.
Al dos cuarentas, es el área, 744-1000.
And number two, two four zero, seven four four, one thousand.
Nosotros queremos por favor que nos ayuden, sabemos que con ayuda de ustedes vamos a lograr una vida digna, una vida con respeto, y nuestros hijos también en un futuro vamos a tener grandes hijos para este país, gracias.
We're asking for your support so we can win, and our, you know, we can get a better work opportunity, and our kids will have a better future.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Ray Lasota.
Good morning, my name is Ray Lasota.
Trabajo para mi hotel hace veinte años.
I've been working for the same hotel for twenty years.
Y lo único que le pido es que necesitamos la ayuda de todos ustedes.
What I'm asking you is your support.
Porque yo sé que lo vamos a lograr.
Because I know that we're going to win.
Porque ustedes están ahí para apoyarnos, porque la lucha es dura, pero lo vamos a lograr, y sí se puede.
I'm asking you for your support, and if you help us, we will win, and, yes, we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar.
Just wanted to tell the speakers, les quiero decir rápidamente que yo les voy a llamar, y yo sé que otros concejales le van a llamar, esto no es justo, tiene que estar ustedes protegados por algo tan simple, poner algo que apoya a su sindicato, muchísimas gracias.
Tell them I support him, tell them I support him.
I, I told the workers that I will call the hotel owner, as will Janice Hahn and Bill Rosenthal, because it's just not just that wearing a union pin would have them fired, there are federal laws against that, there are constitutional protections, and we just want to let them know, to assure them, to keep going on the struggle, because it's not just what happened to them. Thank you.
Weisar, thank you. Thank you very much. To, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next items, Madam President, are confirmations to the Measure L Compensation Review Committee, and that would be items on the Agenda Twelve, Forty-eight, and Sixty-five. They have not had public hearings, and I believe there are cards on Forty-eight.
There are, and if we could ask those individuals to please come to our, the center desk.
And it's Mr. Okafor, Mr. Dewitt, Mr. Buelna, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Silbar, Mr. Narro, and Ms. Clary.
Thank you, and while you're seated, the first speaker, we'll just do the public comment first, Madam Clerk, is Zuma Dog. Zuma Dog? Mr. Zuma Dog, going once, twice, okay, we've closed public comment. Thank you. Mr. Weisar? Did you want to have your button pushed? Did you wish to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam. We, we have several items, Twelve, this is Twelve, Forty-eight, and Sixty-five, Madam President?
Correct.
Okay, well, I want to welcome all of you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. For the public's benefit, what we're doing today is confirming members who will sit on an oversight Citizens Committee to review and set compensation for school board members at LAUSD. What we're doing here today is quite historical, because the city charter allows the city to have some oversight over the school board, but has done very little to do that, in fact, it pretty much allows them to, it only has a couple of sentences in a city charter currently. As many of you know, Measure L was passed this past March, that established a school board campaign contribution limits, that would give the LA City Ethics Commission oversight and enforcement authority, it also established school board member term limits of four, of three, four-year terms, and what this committee will do, will evaluate the responsibilities, the duties of school board members, and establish a salary for them. When we wrote Measure L, we actually discussed what would be an appropriate letter of amount of compensation, but we thought we'd leave it up to a committee to review and think about more, and look at more intently the responsibilities and make recommendations, well, actually, establish them. This was modeled after what the current, what we do for state legislators, and make discussions with Councilmember Herb Wesson, we thought this would be an appropriate way to go about this. And this actually came about through a year-long study from the President's Joint Commission on School Governance, which looked at a number of things, and this was one of the recommendations to review and reestablish the salaries for our school board members. So I want to thank the three of you for your willingness to serve, and if you could please introduce yourselves, I'm not sure if some other committee member, okay, if you could please introduce yourselves, tell us a little bit about yourselves, and what you hope to accomplish through the serving on this committee.
I'm Patricia Clary, Chief Operating Officer of Health Net in California.
Pull the microphone just a little bit closer, thank you.
I'm Patricia Clary, Chief Operating Officer of
Thank you.
Dr. Gabriel Buellna, I'm a faculty member at Cal State Northridge. I'm Executive Director of Plaza Community Center in East Los Angeles. I also have, I'm also a parent. I have three daughters in LA Unified, two at Mount Washington Elementary School, one at Glassell Park Elementary School. From, one of the biggest roles I see being on this commission is to assure that every parent has access to their representative and that LA Unified improve. And if the actions of this commission can help that move forward, then I'd be proud, and I am proud to have made that difference.
Hello. I'm Deborah Silbar. I live in Topanga Canyon, California, the unincorporated area. I have two sons, Cameron and Benjamin, who go to Topanga Elementary School, and I also am looking forward to being actively involved in this process. I have sat for four years on the fundraising PTA, two years as president, very active on an everyday basis with the school there. My husband and I are also owners of a restaurant, Abolita's Mexican Restaurant in Topanga Canyon, where we're always dealing with issues of employment. And prior to that, to my family years, I spent 12 years as Vice President, Creative Director of an advertising agency, and was very active in employing people in a small business situation. I'm looking forward to this and very excited about the opportunity.
Thank you very much. And finally, colleagues, what we attempted to do as well in forming this committee was to have appointments made by different organizations, because as you know, the board of the school district is not only made up of the city of Los Angeles, but it touches at least another 20 cities. So the cities in South Bay made an appointment, the cities of southeast Los Angeles, Los Angeles County made an appointment, the county supervisor made an appointment, our council president had a couple of appointments, and as did our mayor. And I want to thank all the appointing authorities for the wonderful selection. I think we have a very impressive group. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you, Council President Eric Garcetti, for selecting, what I see, some outstanding individuals. Most of these members also were asked to be part of a certain sector. For example, there's labor, there's someone with corporate experience, a parent, and different types of backgrounds, so we could get a collective group to look at the appropriate level of compensation for our school board members, which, in my view, hasn't been looked at in decades and needs to be updated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Wesson.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Weisar, not only for your leadership in bringing Proposition L before the city, which I think was very important for us and for the school district, but also for your recommendation with Mr. Buellna. And it was my pleasure to be able to have that appointment, and the two other appointments are wonderful ones as well. And I think really cut to the heart of most of what I was thinking as well, which is that it's critical for us to make sure that we value public service, and that's what this is about. It's making sure that we understand that we don't do this on the side, that it isn't something that's done as an afterthought, but that our children, our teachers, our school district deserves to have people who are 100% devoted and 100% focused on what their job is. And in order to do that, we need to compensate them at a level that's fair. It's going to be a very political undertaking, because people, the easiest thing to do is say, pay the politicians nothing, you know? Don't ever give them a quality of life. They have such a great life by being, you know, board members, but I think, as Mr. Weisar knows, it doesn't serve any of us to have board members who have to work two or three jobs in order to focus on their job as school board members, and the stakes are way too high. The budget, which is larger than ours, is too big for us to falter on this. So we really appreciate you stepping up and being willing to serve and think creatively as you think through compensation. It's not just about what salary level we peg, but also how we look at the compensation that we do, what sort of incentives, what sort of thinking outside the box for compensation that will help us look at performance-based possibilities for good management and good results for our school district, because we know that we have a long way to go still to reform things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I first want to salute my dear friend and colleague, Mr. Weisar. I do remember we had a brief discussion where related to maybe the best approach would be to set up a compensation committee, and he just ran with that idea with the help of his staff, and I think that this is about, this is a very thorough approach that you've taken, and I applaud you for that. I also want to say that I can't think of a more difficult job than being a member of the LAUSD. And to receive $24,000 for a full-time job where you're working seven days a week just does not make sense to me. So I'm very optimistic that this commission, this board, will properly vet this and come up with something that all of us can live with. The last thing that I want to say is that this was a pleasant surprise for me to see a young lady that I thought was very, very humble when she identified herself and her background. High-ranking member of the Wilson administration when Pete Wilson was governor, chief of staff, the first chief of staff to Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger. And as an aside, the first, oh, no, she's good, Pete. He's a good man, and I'm going to tell you a story, let you know he's a good man. The first big thing that the governor was able to do, I happened to be the Speaker of the House at that time, and see, had I been Speaker longer, I don't think the governor would have had many problems. But we worked out an arrangement, and Pat remembers the late nights in the governor's office as we tried to come up with a way to put a measure on the ballot that would pay bills that we had, and also come up with a rainy day reserve where we could save money for the state. And Pat was critical in that endeavor. It was a pleasure for me to work with her. So I don't know the other two, but you look great, and so I am urging that we do a unanimous vote, and Pat, it's good to see you. And when you get voted, when you get the yes vote, I'm going to come over there and steal a hug.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Arnold is a constituent of mine, and I love my constituents, and we're looking forward to actually a Muscle Beach thing that he and I are going to do. Here's my big story, folks. I did a lot of television shows on politics and the political process. I was always appalled to see that the school board member made 24 grand and had no staff, no real staff, that could be a staff like we have here to look at what comes forward from the bureaucracy, what comes forward on financing and issues. They have an $11 billion budget, if I'm not mistaken, at least $11 billion, and we need to look at two things. One, their compensation. This is a significant job. 24 grand's a joke, unless you're rich. If you're rich people, we will put all the rich on the boards and everything else, but if you're a person with a family, you should make a decent enough salary that the responsibility of dealing with the school system is considered by you serious and a meal ticket for your life. 24 grand is a joke. Secondly, you must be able to look at the bigger aspect of that school board member in terms of staff. The school board member needs staff to evaluate the 10,000 feet of paper that's thrown in front of them by the bureaucracy, and they have to figure out what it's all about. You can't do it. You need your own support staff to help you analyze it, because you represent the people. And when you represent the people, you have to know all aspects of a decision-making process. So my hope is, as you do your due diligence on this, that we look not only at their compensation, but look at what resources do they have that they directly control that helps them evaluate the budgets, help them evaluate the programs, to help them understand the issues. Because I can tell you, in the 11th District, my people want to take over the local schools and make them more effective. They don't like the dropout rate, they don't weigh the situation goes, and we need that leadership coming from the board with support staff that allow them to function. Anybody have any attitudes about the overall responsibilities that we've asked you to take?
They're fair, in terms of, I think, everything that you just said is, you know, having three daughters, you know, Mount Washington Elementary, give it an example, is a very good elementary school, probably one of the best in LA Unified. Question I'm going to have is, where are they going to go to middle school and where are they going to go to high school?
Right.
In order for them to get to the best universities that they'll get to. And the infrastructure that you just said is important for that to happen. If anything that is $11 billion requires oversight, and that's our responsibility and our way of making a difference.
Well, thank you all very much. Did you want to comment?
No, I'm just looking forward to reviewing the entire process and looking at everything that goes into their job and the types of things that are available. I was shocked, actually, to hear that they only made $24,000 a year.
But isn't that just their salary? That is one aspect of it, and the other is giving them the resources to effectively be the accountable agent to the people on all of the issues that the school board deals with. Great. Thank you. And applaud you, Mr. Weisar, for what you did. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Weisar. And just to add my comments before Mr. Weisar closes, as a parent of a three-and-a-half-year-old who's going to be starting elementary school in a year, it's near and dear to my heart. And I think that following, I was actually served on the school board when I was a high school student and have seen it through the years, and the importance of looking at this and really having a commission, which was why Mr. Weisar's leadership, putting it on the ballot, was so important to review, because there's nothing more important than our children, and to be able to have people who can afford to serve in that role. It's quite a commitment to serve as a school board member, and it's one of those jobs that no good deed goes unpunished, I think, some days. And I'm sure you can all relate to that, in particular you, Pat, in your role previously. So I think to close, Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Gru, for co-signing the ballot designation with us on this, and it passed quite remarkably with high numbers, and there was no campaigning. So it showed that the voters of the city of Los Angeles want to see some reforms, some changes at the school district. And, Mr. Rosenthal, I do remember going to your show, and every time I left that show as a school board member, you'd tell me, you guys got to be paid more, and that's why I'd love getting on your show, because you felt my pain. But thank you so much again for your willingness to serve. You know, council president at the time, Alex Padilla, and myself, I was the president of the school board, we recognized the necessity of getting more accountability to the school district, and we felt that it started at the top with the people who are ultimately responsible for the performance of the district, and that's the school board members. This commission, this committee is but one component of many others that the President's Joint Commission came out with as recommendations on how to improve the governance of LAUSD. There's a number of other recommendations that have yet to be implemented. We did our part. We, Council President Padilla and myself, said that whenever the report came out, we will do what's within our jurisdiction to implement those recommendations. We've done it with term limits, we've done it also with reviewing the compensation and also to impose more ethics oversight at the school district. The recommendation that actually came out from the President's Joint Commission, they actually, I think, set a certain number, but it was more than what it is now. There was a lot of opinions on this council, whether it should be really high or just bring it up a little bit, but not too much, so we thought this was the best way of going about it. I would suggest that you look at all the documents that were looked at by the President's Joint Commission. I don't think there's any other body that has examined the governance of LAUSD in as much detail as this commission, and I'm sure there's a lot of information there for you to look at to find out what the responsibilities are and all that other good stuff. When I compare my duties now as a council member as when I was a school board member, I think the demands on my time were just the same, but I don't have to have another job here as a council member. So that's kind of my experience of serving as both capacities. So thank you so much, and we look forward to you coming up with your findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
You've been approved. Congratulations and good luck, and those will be going forthwith. Note, Madam Clerk, that we do have amended motion number 47A that has been distributed. If we could take that item now. Madam Clerk? I know I'm going fast, sorry. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item has been approved as amended. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 64, and that is a special presentation by Dr. Dolores Conway of the, excuse me, USC Lusk Center for Real Estate's 2007 CASD and Multifamily Market Report.
Great. If we could please have you come to the desk, please sit at the table. And if you could just identify yourself. And again, if I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please keep their discussions down to a minimum and to, if you need to, to leave the room so we can hear our speaker this morning. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Dolores Conway. I'm on the faculty of the Marshall School at the University of Southern California, and also I am the Director of the CASD and Real Estate Economics Forecast at the USC Lusk Center for Real Estate. I would first like to thank you for inviting us to give this presentation today. I'd like to thank Mr. Wesson especially and Mr. Garcetti for extending the invitation. At the Lusk Center, what we try to do is to provide objective information about what's going on with the real estate markets in Southern California. And the CASD forecast in particular does a forecast each year in the spring about what's happening with the apartment markets, and we just held that conference on April 4th, and then we were invited to come down and to tell you about it as well. So it's such a pleasure to be here. It's my first trip to the city council, and it's great to see so many distinguished council members that I've read about and seen on television and heard about, and here it is, live. It's wonderful. So thanks for inviting me. Okay, I brought along a handout, and we're just going to go through a few slides kind of quickly. I'll give you sort of an overview of what's been happening with the apartment markets. We hear a lot about what's been happening with the housing market, and the price of homes has nearly doubled in the last four years, but the real, there's a flip side of this that's very important to us in LA County, and that is the apartment market. Almost half of the households in LA County, about 50%, are actually renters. They don't own their own homes. And so what this, the first slide just sort of gives us a profile, and it's the graph in the upper right-hand corner that's kind of critical. Those blue bars show what the rent increases are looking like, and in the last two years, they've jumped up quite a bit. And part of the reason for them jumping up is that black line at the top, which is showing that occupancy rates are going up in apartments, and they're going up throughout the entire county. Now, if we go to the next slide, you'll see that the rents, the average rents in LA County vary quite widely. The west side, West LA, is the most expensive, the areas around Santa Monica, Malibu, et cetera, and those are about $2,100 a month. The cheapest areas are down in the Antelope Valley where rents still, average rents are still about under $1,000 a month. And East LA, which also includes, by the way, Central Los Angeles, the rents there are about $1,200 a month. Overall rents for LA County right now are at about $1,500 per month, and when you multiply that by 12, you come up with $18,000 a year that is being spent on rents. We have some of the highest rents in the nation. We are about fourth highest in the nation, right after New York, Boston, San Francisco, and then there is LA. So rents are becoming quite expensive in Los Angeles. Okay, if we go to the next slide, this is also reflected in the fact that the supply is tight everywhere. Vacancies are below 3%. Normal vacancies might be 4% to 5%, but everywhere, supply is tight, and it's very difficult to find apartments right now. People have to search long and hard to even find a place to rent. Some of the tightest vacancies are downtown Hollywood, West LA, and the San Fernando Valley. But the real interesting thing is that the vacancy rates have really tightened up a lot. If we go to the next slide, we like to look at some of the dynamics in terms of what is causing this, what is contributing to this. Well, everyone, especially if you're a homeowner, how many people here are homeowners? Quite a few. Okay. And you've seen wonderful price appreciation in your homes. In the last four years, median price of homes has doubled everywhere in LA County, and it's gone up even more in the last six years. And there's been a lot of discussion of this and have been in the press quite a bit. What's interesting, though, is And you've seen wonderful price appreciation in your homes. In the last four years, median price of homes has doubled everywhere in LA County. And it's gone up even more in the last six years. And there's been a lot of discussion of this and have been in the press quite a bit. What's interesting, though, is the very next slide, and these are some computations that we did. The next slide, which shows the monthly house payment versus the average apartment rent. In the early part of this decade, even though prices were going up quite a bit, the monthly house payment wasn't going up quite as fast, and that's because interest rates were falling. But then the Fed decided to start tightening up on interest rates, and so they stopped falling. And what happened then is that potential homeowners received the full effects of the high prices of homes as well as higher interest rates. And so in the last two years in particular, actually 2004, 2005, and a little bit in 2006, what we're seeing were then big jumps in the monthly payment. This is actually, and this would be for a fixed-rate mortgage. So what's happened now is that there are real affordability issues. And I think the percentage of people who can actually afford the median-priced home in LA County is less than 10%. It's right around there. And so as a result, there are many more people now are choosing to rent rather than to buy. Some of them are shut out of the market and just can't afford it. And so this has caused a lot more pressure, sort of upward pressure, than on the rents. And it has also tightened up the vacancies tremendously, because there now is a huge demand to rent. By the way, LA's economy is just humming right along. We're doing great so far. And that there are 50,000 new jobs created last year, and people have to live someplace. So they're going to choose either to own or to buy, but with some of the tighter lending standards due to the subprime loan crisis recently, now there really is a big push and demand for renting. And, okay, so now if we go to the loss of supply and demand on the next slide, you will see that new apartment supply has not really kept up with demand in that the, the supply is sort of the dark blue and the demand is kind of the green. And this is over the last five years. You can see that the demand has actually sort of dwarfed the supply, and there hasn't been a lot of supply of new apartments. At the end, though, there's some hope here, though, because now builders are starting to respond to the fact that there are higher rents, that there's strong demand for renting, and they're starting to build new apartments. And at the end of 2006, there were approximately 10,000 apartments under construction. We expect about 5,000 to be delivered this year. And you may think, "Well, that's a lot." But in the heyday, the late 80s, there were 25,000 new apartments that were completed every year in LA County. So we are just really way below where we used to be and way below where the demand is. Okay, now, another thing that has taken away some of the supplies on the next slide, and that is condo conversions. And I know this issue has come before the council many times, and it's one that, that the council is carefully considering. There is some, what's happened has been that a lot of the apartments that were scheduled for development in 2004, 2005 actually were altered, and instead, they were upgraded and came out on the market as condominiums instead. And there were still quite a few condominiums conversions in 2006. But the good news on this is that the whole housing market now has slowed tremendously and that condos are no longer appreciating in price like they used to. And you can see this in all the different Western markets. And here in LA, prices are pretty much flat last year from the previous year. So there is not as much interest now, there's not as much demand for purchasing condos. And as a result, a lot of the condo conversions have actually been tabled and by many of the developers. And so the market pressure for condo conversions has eased. And instead, the market pressure for apartments now has, has actually increased. Okay, if we go to the next page, this sort of shows what's happening throughout LA County. It's just the Hollywood area. But what we're seeing then happening as a result of these market forces is that vacancies are going down and rents are going up. And what's interesting is that rents are going up in all the buildings. They're going up in new buildings that were built after, like, 2000. They're also going up in older buildings that were built, say, between 1990 and 1999. And we're seeing this throughout all the submarkets in LA. So the next slide shows what's happening then in some of the main submarkets that the city might be interested in, and what has happened with rents that I think a lot of people are not aware of, and that is that rents have really increased in the past four years. We're seeing rent increases on the order of 30% over four years. And, I mean, it's not like 100% in terms of the price of homes, but still, 30% rent increases, this is weight, is quite a bit higher than inflation, way beyond the national average. And, and some of the areas have been, the downtown area, of course, Hollywood, West LA, that have seen some of the biggest rent increases that have been going on. Okay. I wanted to show you then what the effect has been of some of these rent increases. If we go to the next slide, you'll see a map that shows Southern California. And this shows what the average rent per square foot looked like in December of 2002. And this was around the time that the housing market was really taking off. And rents, there were still a number of, you know, fairly affordable areas that what that yellow indicates is that that yellow would be roughly the rent, it would be roughly $1,000 rent for roughly a 750-square-foot apartment. If it's green, it means the rent is cheaper than that for, like, 750-square-foot apartment. If it's pink, and especially moving towards red, it indicates that the rent is more expensive than, say, $1,000 a month. Okay? Let's, then, so you can see that the green areas are primarily in the outlying areas of Los Angeles. The inland empire, San Bernardino, Riverside, have always had pretty affordable rents. They've had affordable housing relative to Orange County and Los Angeles. The pink areas are, you know, sort of the west side of LA, also the South Bay of LA. And you can see the parts of Orange County also are pink. Okay, but now if we go forward to where we were at the end of last year, you can see that we have a lot more pink area. And we also have some red area, which is in West LA. We see heavily pink area. It would be very difficult right now to try and find an apartment that would rent for $1,000 a month, that would be about 750 square feet. What this is doing is that it's pushing the, it's pushing sort of people who are looking for places that might be a bit more affordable out towards more outlying areas, more towards Riverside, San Bernardino, and, and the very northern part of LA County. So there's been a fairly dramatic change that has happened over the last four years. In summary then, in terms of our outlook, what we see is that we expect apartment occupancies are going to remain very high because these market pressures will continue, at least in the short term, and that we'll have very tight vacancies. The rents will continue to rise. In 2005, rents in LA County rose 7%. Last year, they rose 5.6%. We expect that they'll rise an additional 5% each year for 2007, 2008. The other thing, takeaway, is that condo conversions have really slowed dramatically. And now there is interest in building new apartments. The primary areas of development are downtown, the city council, actually, through the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance has precipitated a lot of this development in terms of the conversion of industrial property land into residential land. So that has really kind of revitalized the area, and there's a lot of development in downtown LA. Also Hollywood, where there are a lot of transit-oriented developments. People want to take the red line, the mass transit area there. And then the San Fernando Valley, which has always remained popular with people and somewhat rents that are closer to the average. One thing that we should mention, though, is that most of the new supply is going to be for high-end apartments and not for affordable apartments. So I'd like to stop here, and if there are any questions, I'm really happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'd like to, Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Dr. Conway. We really appreciate the presentation, and I'm sure for our viewers as well. It highlights a lot of what people feel, but in a much more methodical way and a much more quantitative way. Certainly, for all of us as council members, we feel those changes in the housing market vary directly from our constituents.
Exactly.
And one thing we've discussed a lot around here is, is what a housing wage is, that computation of what an average person needs to earn an hour to afford a market rate, you know, one-bedroom apartment, which is edging up to about $30 an hour. So that gap between what people are earning and what apartments are costing is certainly a critical factor to watch. Also, I really appreciated the maps, because I think when people ask us always, "Why is traffic get worse and worse each year?" Part of it is population growth, but even more dramatically is the way that people are being pushed out further and further and need to drive into their jobs. That's the fact that it's probably reverse traffic in the city, so that people now commute from the core to the west side because jobs were added there, but no apartments were built there. And I think also, I just wanted to address one myth, that some people sometimes come to us and say, "Oh, the city doesn't want to see any apartments built." We clearly want to see a whole spectrum built. I think you understand how important in the housing market, as Henry Cisneros, a former HUD secretary, said, you really need the full spectrum.
Yes.
Whether you're homeless, you need shelters, you need transitional housing, you need permanent supportive housing, you need rent-controlled apartments, you need apartments at a market rate, first-time homeownership opportunities and full homeownership at market rate. And getting people on that ladder, they can't necessarily jump up to homeownership without good apartment opportunities first, where they're able to save some money and get into decent housing. I was wondering what sort of incentives you think the city needs to be doing to continue to build more apartments? I mean, the biggest problem, I've always believed, is our own nimbyism of saying we don't want to build.
Sure.
But beyond that, you know, in terms of anything regulatory or incentive-wise, do you know what other places are doing to help more apartments get built that we should be looking at?
I'm a little familiar with what San Francisco is doing, and that is that they have really moved into higher-density apartments. I think zoning here could really, zoning regulations and maybe the relaxing of some of the zoning regulations around key areas, it's very difficult, of course, these problems are challenging. But, but moving more towards high-rises with smaller units, we've seen that the market will respond to smaller units. People are happy to live in, like, 750 square feet, or even, you know, even a little bit lower, as long as it's more affordable. And, and then with a lot of the new design developments that have come into place, these apartment units can be made very efficient so that, so that they become very attractive and can be offered at a somewhat lower rental rate, let's say, than a high-end luxury unit would be.
I appreciate that.
That's one thing. Mass transit, I think, also, I know you follow this all the time, but mass transit helps because a lot of the more affordable areas are farther out. And with additional transit possibilities, then we could extend the reach. And the east coast has certainly taken that alternative.
And I think the mayor and this council's embrace of trying to put housing near where those transit corridors is critically important as we develop them.
Exactly. Those have been very popular where the transit corridors are. And, and some of the easing that goes with that of some of the parking restrictions, because then you can definitely build more units if many of the tenants are taking mass transit and maybe don't need, you know, the tremendous parking spaces. But I totally agree with you. It has to be a whole portfolio of options. I think one of the great strengths of Los Angeles is its diversity. And to, there is not going to be one solution, but there will be many, many small solutions, which will probably be effective.
Well, thank you for contributing to the solutions, as I know our Chair, Mr. Wesson, the rest of the committee of Housing Community Economic Development Committee, we are committed to seeing that entire spectrum occur. And also, we take to heart that 30% increase in rents is something that's very difficult for people out there. At the same time, we have some landlords who are good landlords who don't see any turnover in their rent-stabilized units.
Yes, that's right.
And they get penalized for that. So where we can figure out a way to share some of that burden to keep people who are keeping good apartments online and not just reward those who keep their apartments in the worst conditions, because then they get the higher turnover and they get the higher rents.
Excellent point.
Is something that we're very closely looking at as well. So thank you for this great study. I enjoyed reading it, and we look forward to implementing many of the things that will come from it.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Yeah, thank you very much, and Dr., very insightful stuff, a lot of stuff to digest yet, so. But a couple of things jumped out at me, I just wanted to question. When I look at the occupancy rate, which increased from 96.2 to 97.3, is that to a point basically saturation?
Oh, yes, we're definitely at saturation.
So there's not money out.
There's not, I mean, it will get tighter, I'm sure.
But the numbers get diminished to the point where you're not going to see much more tweaking going on with those numbers, because there's not much.
That's right. There isn't much room left.
It's like, full employment is 95%, not 100%.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So as I look at that and say, "Okay, we've reached that level of absolute, pretty much absolute occupancy, the population continues to grow, it's obvious demand is very high, and it has been for a number of years here."
It has.
Yet we haven't developed a lot of apartments. So the question becomes, up to this point recently, with the adaptive use and a few changes that have spurred some of that, up to that point, what were the major disincentives to people investing in the apartment business? Because obviously, the demand was there, business was there. Was there profitability issues with rent control? Was there land use issues?
Yeah, it is primarily the very high cost of land that has prevented the development of apartments. I mean, I did an interview, I think, with the LA Business Journal last year that said builders, two years ago, that builders can't pencil apartments. And because of the high cost of land, it's been very difficult to actually cover the costs when it's just a rental. It was far easier to then convert those units to condominiums and to sell them as condominiums. But now that market has really slowed down, the whole, you know, buying market has slowed down. So some of the developers are coming back to apartments, and we even had a reversion downtown. The Mosaic development was, I think it was going to be apartments, then it was going to be condos, and actually, now it's being released as apartments. So partly, the market will help with this in terms of providing the incentives, but it's really the high cost of land that is really doing it.
And so what drives developers to make that pencil work is the ability to recuperate their investment, or return on investment. So when you look at return on investment, what has held that down? Because I see apartment rates increasing dramatically in LA. Has it been rent control? Has it been market rate has not been enough to overcome the cost of land?
What it was is that the rents did not really increase that dramatically in LA up until about 2003, 2004. And then, it's really been the last two years where rent increases really took off. And I think that is actually helping. I know, you know, Mr. Casden, for example, big developer of apartments, he loves apartments, and he is now getting very interested again in apartments, because when you see, you know, 6%, 7%, 8% rent increases, then that can help to, you know, give the return on investment.
But would.
But prior to this, we had very small increases in the rents.
So that, the question begs then, in a normal economic model, if demand is high, then prices would rise if supply is low.
Yes.
So why hasn't that happened in LA?
It is happening.
It is happening now.
It's happening now, yeah.
Why didn't it happen up to this point, though, the last previous decade?
Because, well, first of all, we were still kind of recovering from the 1990 recession, which, there was a lot of overbuilding that went on there. And so the vacancies weren't nearly as low as they are today. And then, of course, things started to pick up in the late 90s, but, but now what we're seeing, then the 2000 recession hit. And I think it's been because now we have decent job growth, and so they can get those rents, do you see? Because the economy has improved. And, and we're seeing a lot of new job created across diversity of industries. So that has really helped in terms of the ability then to find buyers who can pay those rents.
Well, I thank you very much for this insightful information, particularly as we're going through our budget process for the year and as we're looking at revitalizing our planning department. And with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Reyes, his term of the committee, but he's got to deal with the issues of land use and how it impacts on this. So thank you very much for this information. Appreciate it.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Welcome, Dr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I appreciate the bird's-eye view of these trends and these pressures that we're feeling. But I wanted to ask you, from a policy point of view, we have a history in the city of putting together policies, like specific plans, that limits where we can build. And yet, we have other parts of the city without specific plans, but we have high concentrations of people living. We have two, three families living in one-bedroom apartments.
That's right.
So in this policy deliberation, as we go through the process of a rejuvenated planning department, and we're now embarking on community plans, what role can we play in looking at these specific plans and these community plans to allow for more apartments? What issues do we need to address so that there's a stronger engine for the supply side to meet the demand?
Yes, yes. Well, I think that we have to start building up, actually, Mr. Reyes, and higher-density, more high-rise buildings. And of course, the council would be significant in terms of approving increased density and zoning. I think the council did take a huge step forward with the adaptive reuse ordinance. I mean, all those abandoned industrial properties downtown or parking lots, they just saw what a wonderful opportunity to build new apartments there. There are still those possibilities in areas of the city, but now we've got to go, street by street and block by block, in order to find them, because we don't have large amounts of developable land anymore.
One of my first actions as a policymaker, as a council, is to take adaptive reuse citywide, with the standing it would open up these opportunities.
Yes.
After all the hard work the planning department did to put that policy together. But we have a history in the city where one area of the city has over, I'd say, anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred specific plans.
Yes.
How it controls its space, which is where you probably see the red areas and the pink areas. And there's other parts of the city that don't have a specific plan, but yet, the demand is there, the cost is rising, because there's so many people concentrated there.
There's a tremendous demand for workforce housing, there's a tremendous demand for affordable housing. Usually, these are, the financing of these is patched together, and it is a consortium that contributes to this, including the city, in order to make it happen.
Would you say it's about time that the stakeholders, like the neighborhood councils, the homeowner associations, the realtors, begin to identify where we can build these facilities, as opposed to telling us where we can to build it?
Yes, I think that, and I think that there is, that there are a number of, that there's a lot of interest in that, and people are moving forward on that. Once again, as I said to Councilmember Garcetti, that it's probably going to be a multi-pronged approach, it's going to be many different options, many different ideas, that's going to get us there, and we'll do it step by step.
And I look forward, as Chair of Planning, Land Management, to facilitate that process. We did try a couple years ago to be more inclusive in how we looked at housing. I think today, we need to start connecting the dots and establish those links.
Yes.
Where we identify infrastructure capacity with the notion of compatibility with neighborhoods, so we can identify those, either that green light or that safe zone in which we know we can build housing. And that's something I look forward to working with you.
Yes.
And the other professionals who have an understanding of this real need. So thank you so much for your hard work.
And we look forward to the same, Mr. Reyes, we do.
Thank you.
And trying to provide accurate information along the way. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zein, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
The issue of infrastructure, transportation.
Yes.
Schools, police, it seems that when we're discussing housing, those other elements are left aside, are pushed aside. Southern California Association of Governments has the six counties where they say we mandate that you build so many residential units, and we have one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand that we're supposed to build. I don't know where we're going to put them, but we keep going higher and higher, the roads get more and more congested, people get more and more frustrated. The water problem that we're having in this state, and I met with one of the individuals from Metropolitan Water recently in Sacramento, that there may be a crisis looming, if we don't have the rain, to bring in water, and the snow that helps keep our desert wet. What about the other aspects? Because what I hear is that...
Those are critical aspects, Mr. Zein. I'm so glad that you mentioned them, they're absolutely critical. One of our other centers, institutes at the LUSC Center is the Keston Institute for Infrastructure, and it is totally about infrastructure, because you're right, real estate development is not in a vacuum, it is done in the context of a community, and the infrastructure is absolutely critical. The mass transit, the water, the electricity, the power, everything goes hand in hand.
But it doesn't seem that our transportation system can handle the current demand. If you look at the Santa Monica, the ten freeway, or the four-oh-five freeway.
Yes, definitely.
The commute starts at 5:00 a.m., early morning news starts at 5:00 a.m., and it keeps on getting earlier and earlier. If you go out to the eastern part of the region, near the six-oh-five and the areas out in Glendora, Azusa, the folks that live out there work in metropolitan areas, the long commute.
Yes.
They're burning gasoline at three-fifty a gallon, I hear the prediction is four dollars by summer. As that continues to erode spendable cash for families to enjoy some of the niceties, go to a restaurant, buy a new pair of shoes or whatever, that all affects the quality of life and the environment and our economic vitality. But when I hear about housing, and the condos were popular, now they're not as popular. Apartments are popular, the interest rates go up, the interest rates go down, the housing prices fluctuate, et cetera. Homes that sold in the forty-thousand-dollar range, brand-new, are up in the half-million-dollar range now.
Unbelievable.
So while we look at all this, and you look at the west side where people talk about the four-oh-five, how you get to the airport, we don't see any solution. All we talk about is build more to accommodate more, and the job market seems to evaporate, where we see industry leaving, we find that there's a disconnect. And what I look at, like Warner Center, which I represent, the San Fernando Valley Warner Center.
Yes.
Where they're trying to put more and more residential, and we've said, what about the job balance?
And the emphasis.
The people who work at Macy's and work at Nordstrom's and work in the restaurants can't afford the current apartment rates, there are fifteen-hundred, two-thousand dollars to rent, so they live in other areas and commute and jam our roadways. What about the realistic connection? So we don't end up with more and more gridlock, as all the surveys show, people are very frustrated with the time it takes to travel anywhere. We don't have a viable public transit system like New York or Europe, where you can get on a public system and get there in a reasonable amount of time. We're disconnected from the San Fernando Valley, I can't get to LAX on a public transit, it just doesn't exist.
That's right.
So how do we blend those components together with your report on additional housing, additional height in building housing? And if you look at downtown, all the old office buildings are being converted, so people are going to move downtown. But there are a lot of people who want to have a yard, who want to have their children play with a white picket fence, and have the dog run around, and they can't do that in downtown.
There are a lot of people, though, that really are moving away from the suburbs and are moving more towards what would be called more citified environments.
Why are they doing that?
Well, first of all, we have, the baby boomers are aging, and so they have, you know, had their children and have sent them to schools, and they don't want the upkeep and the maintenance of the big suburban house anymore, and would prefer some of the cultural amenities that exist in downtown areas, for example. Also, we have a lot of young professionals who want to jump-start their career here, and they want to come to downtown, they want to go to the west side, that's, I mean, that's where their jobs are, that's where they want to be, and they want to, and they're going to be working, probably sixty hours a week anyways, so they want to be close to where they're working. I mean, the big, what everybody is talking about these days are live-work-play environments, and they're attractive to the young professionals, they're attractive to retirees. And so there is demand, that's why downtown has actually taken off as much as it has, but not just here, also in San Diego, also even in Atlanta, in Chicago, I mean, everywhere, downtowns are being revitalized. And, but you're absolutely right about the infrastructure. I think one, partly, the market is helping by the people who want to live in live-work-play environments and don't need to travel on the freeways. And, you know, and as bad as the gasoline prices are getting, I mean, it is encouraging more carpooling, and to try to get some of the cars off as a way of economizing. It's just like, I forget who said this, I think it might have been Mr. Reyes, that people are doubling up in apartments, they're doubling up in condominiums to be able to afford it.
Right.
There is always the resiliency of the consumer to adapt to whatever the conditions are.
But what about the quality of life? And that's the concern that Mr. Reyes has for his community, the quality of life.
That's right, the quality of life.
We have a two-bedroom apartment, and you have eight people in a two-bedroom apartment, you don't have a real good quality of life. What we're trying to do is provide that at a reasonable level.
Exactly.
And with the cost, and the developers talk about how much it costs to build, does it pencil out? And I'm going through the battle right now in my district in Warner Center, where they want to build more and more multiple dwellings, and I'm saying, as we keep on building, we're losing our industrial, we're losing our commercial, and there won't be any jobs. So what you'll have is residential and no jobs. So now you're going to commute and clog the roads, which we're still not addressing the congestion on our roadways.
I think that, you know, your comments are just right on target, that these are...
Right, listen to Zuma, because he's the one that talked about congestion.
You don't listen to me about congestion, Mr. Reyes?
That's a bad mark for me, Zuma, but that's all right. Because I've heard him talk about that, and it's the reality, that the person who lives and pays taxes says, who's going to address the daily issues that we have to deal with? That it takes us an hour and a half to get to work. It takes us, on the weekends.
Exactly.
The same type of situation. The weekends used to be relatively free on the roadways, no longer. So I just hope that some component in the reality check can be included to say, yes, are we going to build more freeways, are we going to build a monorail, are we going to do something so we can move people around this massive territory of four million?
I'm with you totally, I really am.
I appreciate your report, Doctor, I just want to make sure those other components are tagged onto there.
Absolutely, no, they're absolutely critical.
Thank you for your patience, the council president gave us a little extra time. Thank you.
I did. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I see West Los Angeles, which is where I'm at, okay?
Yes.
On your page fourteen of your report.
Yes.
The one line, of course, that is obvious, these trendy neighborhoods remain the most desirable and affluent submarkets in Los Angeles County, with monthly rents for all existing apartments averaging two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven at the end of two thousand and forty, two thousand and six, forty-five percent higher than the county's average.
It's amazing.
It's all about location, location, location.
It is always in real estate.
Now, I happen to have fifty percent of my constituents are renters. We have housing stock in the eleventh district, some is affordable and some is market rate.
Yes.
I'm trying to preserve the affordable housing I have before the horse gets out of the barn, and I'm also trying to create more housing in my district. So it's a double commitment, okay? To create more housing, my light industrial areas are something we're looking at, because the great city of Santa Monica decided to become all about jobs and have gridlocked every one of my streets with people coming from east-west, north-south to go to Santa Monica to shop or to work. But there's no housing. And the local governments in my district, there are four governments in the eleventh district, there's the city of Los Angeles, Santa Monica, which is in the heart of my district, Culver City, which gets a sliver, including a Costco at the edge of my Venice, and the county of Los Angeles, with its huge dreams of tons of apartment structures there that they're going to do. How do we get the right balance? And how do we get the four governments to work together, so that if you build the housing, I'll build the jobs, together we build the transportation? They've never worked together, and now my district is the most gridlocked district in the city, north-south, east-west. What advice do you have to give to me to be more effective?
Well, just keep pounding away. I think that, you know, once again, you've hit upon what one of the key difficulties is, and that is to get coordination, especially in the mass transit. And, you know, I think the key thing here is just to just keep going and just don't give up. And eventually, I think that when the congestion is strong enough and hard enough, people will come to recognize that working together may actually be far more beneficial.
Well, they've reached the point, we've had it in the eleventh district, we're fed up, and we want relief.
Yes.
And so I did throw eleven million into local traffic mitigation plans, left-hand turn signals, synchronizing lights. But the bigger projects, like the Expo Line to Santa Monica.
Exactly.
The Green Line, that must go from Torrance up to Santa Monica and handle that area. Obviously, the Crancho Line needs to happen, and the subway to the sea needs to happen. All that requires billions of dollars.
It does, indeed. And, but, you know, the good news is, is that the west side of L.A. is right on the ocean, and it's, there's, you know, so many people who want to live in this area, and especially in your district, that there will be always strong demand.
One of the things I was pushing for was a condo conversion moratorium, so that we could take a break. I've seen my folks being thrown out of apartment buildings and then switched to condos. I have no problem with first-home buyers being a condo owner, but I don't want to see my middle class kicked out of the eleventh district. Any sense about that?
Yeah, I think that the market is helping you on that, because the condo conversions have really slowed down. For developers who are doing condo conversions now, it's very difficult for them to sell the units, many of them are really rethinking it, they're tabling many of the projects, and postponing it until buyers come back into the market.
Should we have SCAG provide us some regional leadership, or how do we get this going? I'm a member of the West Side COG.
That's a good point.
Which is Beverly Hills, Hollywood, Santa Monica, Culver City, and the city of L.A. Janice Hahn is a member of the South Bay COG, which is another group. Is that one strategy?
That's a very interesting idea. I think that, yes, SCAG has, I go to all the SCAG conferences myself, SCAG, I think, has made some inroads. I mean, they were able to get the Alameda Corridor through, which really helped tremendously to move the industrial traffic out of the ports, tremendously that helped, and it really helped add to the economy. And it shows what a coordinated effort can actually accomplish. So, yeah, I definitely would welcome input from SCAG on all fronts, and also from the governor's office, I would think, because Governor Schwarzenegger has put, I mean, there are a number of propositions now for new infrastructure in Southern California, and I would think that there are some opportunities there for good plans to succeed.
Thank you very much for your report, too, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Fabulous, as you can see, people are very interested, this is an issue that's important to all of us, and some of the districts that are more greatly impacted, mine being one of them as well, with the condo conversions and apartments and the issue of infrastructure, as mentioned by Mr. Zein, for us. So thank you very much for your presentation. Colleagues, this is not an item that we're voting on, so it is a presentation, so we don't have to take a vote. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you so much for having me, and it was a real pleasure to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I know there are two items, I think, eleven and nineteen, where two, where amendments have been circulated, unless there's any discussion on those items, I'd ask that we move item number eleven and nineteen. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, those items have been approved. Now I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Reyes.
President?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, did you?
It's just a quick announcement that I meant to make at the outset, just because I know some people are out there with the fire, and I know Mr. LeBonde, some people have been asking me, Mr. LeBonde is still out there in the fire area, we took a tour this morning, and want to let people know that people are being permitted back in their homes for emergencies, to get to their pets, to get to their medications, and some other things. They will be reopening, hopefully towards the end of the day, about sixty percent of the fire is under control, and we had three hundred firefighters, many of whom were just collapsed, sleeping on the sidewalks there in Griffith Park, who are doing a tremendous, tremendous job, and Tom's there on the scene as well, so he wanted to pass on his best. I want to let the people of L.A. know that they can, if they're right up there in Los Feliz, go into their homes, there is access now, but they're not, there's still, the permanent evacuation order is in place. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, appreciate it.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. Tom, this is for you. I know you can't be here at this moment, but Tom, together with you and my colleagues at Hock River Committee, for six years, we didn't give up. For six years, we pounded away on a concept, on an idea, on a dream, that's going to come to fruition. Because after today, with Tom's leadership, with all the advocates, the Lewis McAdams of the world, who never stop dreaming, we finally got to a place where we can truly talk about change, truly talk about the future, and instill that thought that this great riverway can bring life back to our city, can rejuvenate, replenish those communities that have a history being neglected. Speaking of neglect, I don't neglect my colleagues, I know Councilperson Perry has to leave, so I'd like for her to speak, and I'd love to hear her comments, she's been a strong supporter of this process, has a great, is going to leave a great legacy of of applying the whole notion of ecosystems and natural habitats in the inner city with some great projects. John?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Reyes, and I understand the dramatic impact and the legacy of what you've undertaken with your dogged determination. As one who finally brought the first constructive wetlands to South Los Angeles, and I'm working on a second one already, I understand the dramatic impact that the presence of water, the better water management, the cleaning of our water system and our ecosystem can have on the neighborhoods that we represent. So I want to thank you for your tenacity and remaining true to your cause. I also want to thank Gary Lee Moore and all the staff at the Bureau of Engineering, the entire Tetra Tech team for their dedication. And although this plan is said to impact, I believe, its 10 council districts by improving the river and its borders, we are improving the entire city and creating access for everyone from land that has been fallow for most of our lives. This will be one of the greatest destinations in the city that we can create for generations to come. And not only is it just the river, the river is just the beginning. It creates opportunity for us to use the river as the foundation to create additional projects for those of us who believe in that and do have vision. I think many of us already understand how we can use the river to go further and deeper into the communities that we represent. One source of inspiration for that has been, for me, and maybe for Mr. Reyes, is the River Walk in San Antonio, which many of us already know was created through a bypass and taken through the community through a bypass plan to take the bounty and the benefits of the river and to help it to meander through areas that had not previously been considered. So I want to share that with everyone. This master plan includes 200 potential projects and green spaces, linear parks, recreational areas, something that we can all benefit from. And as we all have discussed many times, being advocates for water quality and making sure we have safe, clean water, water quality is one of the strongest aspects of this project and for my district and Mr. Reyes's district. If you look back on the statistics on Proposition O, it was passed by large margins in our district. So the people that we represent in South LA and Pico Union and the 1st District, they care very, very much about the quality of the water. Not only are these projects to purify water, to mitigate debris, to treat stormwater, it draws attention to the importance of keeping the river clean, which is a teaching tool for everybody's children, no matter where you live. And I hope we'll all vote unanimously on this master plan and continue to be deeply involved and very engaged so that this project will be there for those who come after us.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Madam President, I just wanted to make sure that my colleague was able to speak to this. She's worked very hard before she left. But there are so many thank yous that I would love to go through. We have our mayor, Antonio Veregosa, who's been a real strong advocate, strong supporter. His staff, Nancy Sully, deputy mayor, and Krista, who's been to all the meetings. Thank you so much for all your hard work. The great staff, Gary Moore, who never, never gave up and just went into the trenches and just gave us that sense of energy and strength and that, what we say in Spanish, sabidoria, that knowledge of how we can move forward. My staff, Lupe Vela, Joe Sorrell, thank you so much for not giving up. My whole staff, and just making sure that we were inclusive, that all communities would benefit from this with our months and months of community meetings. But Tetra Tech has been the essential consulting group that provided the parameters by which we can move forward. Lucille Robayalder, our Congress member, has been there from the beginning, is currently moving $22 million through the federal government, has passed through the Transportation Committee, is moving forward. Our Senator Barbara Boxer is moving with $16 million, our Prop O funds. We're all pushing real hard to get to the type of funds that allow us to acquire significant land, that truly make this a water treatment facility. I'll stop here, because I know there's more folks we want to hear from, but if we can have the staff come to the center table, and as they're coming, I know we have new council members, former state senator, former Assembly Member Alacon, who's advocating for his district, and like I shared with him, it doesn't stop here, it begins here. This is a river plan that focused to the degree that our money allowed. This was never a watershed plan. It never connected all the tributaries, because we just did not have enough money to do that. It doesn't mean we cannot do it in the future. It doesn't mean we can't start addressing the issues of equity, of access, of water treatment for all income groups. This is the beginning. So, again, let's hear the Reader's Digest version from our staff and go forward with the various speakers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Good morning. Gary Moore, city engineer with Bureau of Engineering.
And Deborah Weintraub, deputy city engineer, Bureau of Engineering.
And I'll take the cue from the councilmen and make it very brief, but I want to start off by saying thank you to Councilman Reyes and the Ad hoc River Committee, the members and your leadership and the guidance that you've given us throughout the entire process that we've worked hand-in-hand together.
And Mr. Moore, let's not forget Ron Dean, Department of Water and Power at the get-go. He gave us the green light, and by the way, the first $3 million, so...
You took the words right out of my mouth. That's what I was going to thank next was Department of Water and Power, not just for the financing, but their continued partnership now and as we go forward, because they're going to be a tremendous partner in this project. And I also do want to thank the mayor, Mayor Veregosa, as he's gone to Washington DC, as he's gone to Sacramento, he takes the river plan with him and continues to promote this plan, because we all know it needs funding to go forward, and he's been a great, great advocate for this. This plan here has four major goals, and one is to revitalize the river. What we're talking about is water quality, as you heard Councilwoman Perry talked about, and also a continuous greenway. All 32 miles here, we want to see that become a reality. The Los Angeles River is 51 miles from out there, beginning at Arroyo Calabasas and Bell Creek and Canoga Park, all the way down to Long Beach, 32 of which are in Los Angeles, and that is what this plan is about. And the first goal was to revitalize the river. The second goal was greening the neighborhoods. As we went to over 18 community meetings and over 2,000 people participating in these meetings, they said, make the river great, but connect it to our neighborhood. And so this plan talks about green streets and open space along the river. It's so essential to the plan. Third goal was capturing community opportunities. And this is, we have such a great, rich, diverse community here in Los Angeles, and we're going to incorporate that into this plan, and we've incorporated that into the plan, really celebrating the heritage of the river and the community together and making sure that the river is the focus of activity in the neighborhoods. And finally, is to create value. Look at opportunities where employment and housing, retail space can be created along the river. And to make sure that this is implemented, we've also proposed a governance structure and a number of recommendations that really lead into the implementation. And so with that, I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And, Mr. Reyes, you look great with that sign. You look great, and we were remarking what a beautiful shot it was. We can cut back to it. We wanted to thank the control room for doing such a good job on the shot, too. But that sign, which Tom Labange helped us design, we all voted on, it's been one of the greatest joys of the last five and a half years of public service for me to be on this committee. And to be the vice chair of this committee with Mr. Reyes, his leadership as chair, Ms. Perry, Mr. Weisar, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Labange, and really, this entire council. Our city exists because of this river. Our name comes from it. Our history runs through it. Much further in time, my journey with this river began with walks with my father, a high school teacher named Louis McAdams, the revisioning and when I campaigned, saying, you know, that this was probably the one issue people responded to the most enthusiastically, hands down. And who would have thought we would have been where we are today? That as the moment that we're looking at the revitalization master plan, we're not talking about a plan, and I want to be very clear to the folks who are watching out there and the people that are here, that we're thanking Mr. Reyes and all the great people, and I don't want to repeat any names, because they were already said very eloquently, but I wanted to thank all the parties, the mayor's office, you know, the consultants, the bureau, and the board for the work they've done. We're not going to put that someplace and say, just like the Olmsted Plan, that would have been a great idea, but we're never going to do that. As we speak here today, it is already going forward. Who would have thought four years ago, the trash in the Los Angeles River would be down 40%? Who would have thought a few years ago that two giant parks along the Los Angeles River would be open, one fully for business, another one being reimagined as we speak? Who would have thought that we would actually have carp jumping in the Los Angeles River as we speak here today? Even though they're probably a little too destructive of a species, we'll get some other fish in there. But who would have thought that people are going down to the river and actually fishing there? That herons and cranes and other beautiful flora and fauna are blossoming there as we speak? So I want to thank Mr. Reyes for the work that he did to help us all realize that a dream isn't just something that we can think about, but that we can actually do, and all the fellow members of the team who were a part of that. For me, there are two parts of the river I have the joy of being a partial steward of, both in Alleejen Valley and Mr. Reyes's work on Taylor Yard will help us with the bridge between the two, link the bike path to Taylor Yard and vice versa, Taylor Yard to the residents who live in Alleejen Valley, formerly known as Frog Town. And I remember my grandfather telling stories about when the floods used to occur, and it was first named Frog Town because of the number of frogs in Atwater Village and now Alleejen Valley that used to spawn when the floods would happen. But also along Atwater Village, we have a real opportunity as well, and I appreciate the inclusion of Fletcher Drive as a section that we really can look at as a revitalized part of the city. And as we look at the river, too, there's two aspects of it. One is how we can turn our face back to the river, as we've said many times, but also protect jobs that are along the Los Angeles River, as Mr. Reyes and I have been speaking about recently, clean and green jobs that replace the old, dirty, polluting jobs, but that we bring also housing that looks towards the river back. And I think that's a really important part of what this has done as well. And then lastly, looking at habitat, there is still a disconnect between communities of color and poor folks that grow up alongside the river and the nature that is a part of what it is inherently. And as we look at habitat standards and trying to really restore what Father Juan Crespi first saw when he looked through there, what Gabrieleno Tongva Indians suffer centuries before that, looking up through that beautiful pass that is through the Glendale Narrows, that is the place where we can restore nature in the heart of the city. And we haven't stopped dreaming through this. This is a beginning. There are, as you said, Mr. Reyes, so many additional parts that we can add to this. I know Mr. Alacon is talking about making sure tributaries are a part of this. We have tributaries that lead in and out of the Los Angeles River throughout. We will and must include those as well. We must also look at our recreational opportunities, whether it's a downtown lake, whether it's, as I've been talking about, a 2,000-meter stretch where we can actually row boats, and when we do get the Olympics back here sooner or later, we'll be able to do it right there in the shadow of downtown, or whether it's also looking at what we can do in terms of making this a showpiece for the urban environment, not just for Los Angeles, but nationally. So congratulations. This has my fullest support today. It is not a complete document, but it is a midway report in many ways, as much as it is a visioning. And that is the proof to the people of Los Angeles who entrust us not just to think, but to do, that the doing has already begun and the thinking continues as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Weisar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Ed Reyes. You've been steadfast on all this, and you not only are bringing to us something that is going to remarkably change the face of the city of Los Angeles, but also you've been engaging our communities, which is so important. And I think that is very important as we move forward to this, to not only get people to know the possibilities of what can be, but it's bringing communities closer and together, and we hope when this river is done in a revitalized mode, it is going to bring the city a lot closer together. And I say that because my own history with this river is one that, growing up in East LA and in Boa Heights, I looked upon the river as a barricade, as a barrier to the rest of Los Angeles. But here, once we finish this river, it's really going to be one where we come together, all of us in the city of Los Angeles. I know that I'm particularly excited about the node that was picked between 1st and 7th Street, one that touches upon downtown Los Angeles. And in politics, we often say that perception is reality. Now, the perception that people have of the city of Los Angeles is one that it continues to be on the top 10 lists of cities with the most smog. But can you imagine, as we fly over Los Angeles and we see luscious green, right smack center in the city of Los Angeles, people recreating in green space? Who knows? Possibly people swimming, going in the lake, whatever it may be. And if people see this as they go over the city of Los Angeles in the future, it's really going to change the perception of what Los Angeles is about and, hopefully, the reality. Everyone else involved has done a wonderful job. I know the events in my district have gone over well, from the outreach to providing the technical documents, and Gary Lee Moore, I can't say enough about your excitement about all the projects that you're involved with, and certainly all your team has done a wonderful job, as I've seen it go forward in the events we've had in my district, and thanks to Tetra Tech as well. And I look forward to, as Mr. Garcetti reminded us, that this is not only a planning document, it's something we're actually implementing. And as we all know, the green that we're going after in the river, we also know that green that hopefully is going to come to us from the state and the federal government to top off this cake. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gruel.
I think you said councilmember Gruel. Thank you, and I want to start by complimenting Ed Reyes. I'm now an honorary member. I was one of the first members. I gave up my seats so Mr. Weisar could serve on the River Committee, but it's been something very close to my heart. And it cannot be said enough today, Ed, that we would not be here without you, really. This has been your dream, your vision. You have been the person who's knocked on the doors, pushed down those doors, whether it be in Congress, here locally, on the state level, and the communities, to say, it's possible. We can do this. There are examples, and I know that you have done that on the federal level to get the dollars necessary. And as you mentioned, this is just the beginning. We can now say we're looking at things differently in Los Angeles. I have both the river and the Tuhanga Wash that goes through my district, and I know the county on certain parts of that is also developing, and the Army Corps of Engineers. This will take everyone's cooperation and partnership to make it a reality. It is not something that one entity, one local government, one community will be able to accomplish on their own. And I think that this process, the number of hearings that have taken place, the input has been extraordinary. In my decades of public service, I have to admit, decades, I've never seen something that has been so thoroughly reviewed and been out there and talked about as a beginning document and a process where we can change the face of the city of Los Angeles, and where when you say to young kids, you know, have you seen the LA River? And they say, there's an LA River? They have no impression, and even adults have no idea, who have grown up here, that there's a Los Angeles River, and the importance of that river to our city. And it is everything from making sure we have clean water and the whole issue around that, to recreational space that is so devoid in many communities in the city of Los Angeles. There's nothing greater that I know Ed sees than others, where people can ride their bicycles, where they can go down with a special to take a boat down there. It is something that we have to envision. It's the same as we talk about the issue of transportation, you know, where people say, if it's not going to be done in my lifetime or in my, you know, point where I'm an elected official, am I going to spend time on it? That was not something that Ed ever thought about. He thought about the future and how this was going to work and how we could get other. So this is going to be a catalyst, Ed, to others to say, if the city of Los Angeles can begin the process and set up this revitalization master plan, our opportunities are limitless throughout the city of Los Angeles and to make all those connections. But you took the first step. You made sure that this was a reality when so many other people said it could never be done. I have to admit, Ed, there were probably a few people who said, is he crazy? This is not something we ever thought, will they ever tear down those walls? I think you might have heard that from the Army Corps of Engineers as well. But I also want to thank all the people who are here, who made it possible, who also invested their time and energy, and sometimes even their financial resources, to make this a reality, to let us know that we do have a river in Los Angeles, and it is going to be revitalized, Ed, because of your leadership and those of us standing beside you and behind you, letting and making sure so. I always see myself as an honorary Ad hoc River Committee member and appreciate that you continue to see me in that light. It's very, very important for our city. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Mr. Alacon.
I love you, Ed. I think you did tremendous work. But as is, I'm inclined to vote no on this project. Not because it's, I think, it isn't a model for the nation. In fact, I think it is a model for the nation. Ed Reyes has been working on this, I remember specifically, long before he was a councilman, he was working on improvements along the river in... he was working on improvements along the river in what is and known as CD1, and is to be commended for the tenacity, as one person said, for his stick-to-itiveness and the vision that he has created for this city. But I'm disheartened to know that the North San Fernando Valley, the Northeast San Fernando Valley in particular, where Hanson Dam feeds into the Los Angeles River and includes communities like Pacoima, Sun Valley, North Hollywood, many blighted areas as defined by the CRA, is essentially excluded from this master plan. It's mentioned that the tributary should be considered, but it's not included. This city constantly makes mistakes when it ignores the poor and working-class communities. Now, we're standing in Mr. Reyes's district, which that's exactly why he's fighting for this project, in the San Fernando Valley, it goes through all the rich communities. And I'm tired of the same old governmental treatment of tax dollars that go into a general pool that are paid for by the people in Pacoima, and yet, they're not getting their due out of this project. Now, Mr. Reyes will explain that there are limited dollars in the master planning fund. $3 million wasn't enough to include all the tributaries. I grant you that. But I will not support this measure unless we could move forward with a vision that includes those tributaries. I introduced the Urban River Parkway Bill in Sacramento and worked with Tom Hayden to make sure that we would get funding for urban river parkways. But I believe that the communities of Pacoima, Sun Valley, North Hollywood, and many other poorer working-class communities deserve these projects, in fact, in many ways, more than some of the communities that already have larger percentages of acreage of parks in their communities. And so what I would like to ask for, Mr. Reyes, is an amendment that would simply say that, independent of today's action, the council directs the Bureau of Engineering to develop a plan of action on how to include the various tributaries and watersheds which feed into the Los Angeles River, into the work done on the Los Angeles River revitalization master plan, and the Bureau of Engineering report back to the council in 30 days with suggestion for possible funding to achieve the express goal of including the tributaries and watersheds into the Los Angeles River revitalization master plan. What that does essentially is allows the project move forward, allows me to vote for it in good conscience, but it also expands the vision to incorporate, at least the intent of this council, those areas that have not been fully realized in this master plan. And I intend to work with the council. In fact, we, you know that I introduced a measure to call for a million-dollar study of the CRA, so there is funding available to do this. It seems that if I'm doing an economic development study, we ought to be able to also incorporate into that same study a connection to this master plan. So the funding stream, if you will, may be available, but I would urge this in the spirit of reaching out to all the areas of Los Angeles that are affected by the LA River.
Did you want to say something back about the amendment?
Do you want to respond to him now?
Sure. If you want to say something about that amendment, sure.
I'd like to respond to the amendment. One, Congressman Alacon, I applaud your heroism in standing up for impoverished communities of your district, but this was about the river way. And the focus was about how we start with the first step, to include the tributaries and the watershed, and to do it justice, we would probably need another $5 million. So the issues you raise are significant because there's many poor areas throughout the city that were not observed or absorbed in this study for the same simple reason, we want to stay focused on the river as a waterway within a regional watershed. So it's not an excuse. I'm not trying to be like all the other politicians that say, "We didn't treat you this way because we didn't have enough money." It had nothing to do with that. It had all to do about what's real, how we deal with our flood control, how we improve our economic development opportunities, how we change the culture of the city, and how we even get the folks to understand we even have a river in the city. So I look forward to working with you. I appreciate the amendment. It's very positive. I'm assuming you support the study with the amendment so we can send a clear message to your former colleagues in the Senate, your former colleagues in the Assembly, to let them know that while you were Assembly Member and Senator, that you were looking out for your district as this plan was evolving, as we had all those hearings in your district. So I appreciate your support.
Ms. Hahn is next, and then Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just wanted to rise and really thank you, Ed Reyes, and thank all the committee members for the ad hoc committee on the river. You know, this is when it takes real courage, real political will, because there were those that said, you know, "Not only we don't have a river, but the thought of really creating this kind of revitalized, vibrant recreational opportunity throughout Los Angeles is absolutely impossible. It's going to cost too much." But it's important. And I felt that kind of excitement when we began to redevelop our waterfront in San Pedro. It's the feeling that people love to be near the water. People will drive miles to walk by water. Every great city in this country and internationally is great because of its access to water and its ability to allow public access to water. And this is a beautiful plan. It has taken great political will, great courage. Really want to thank city staff for working on this. I think it'll be a huge part 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. We will all look back to this day and remember what a brilliant first step this was towards bringing public access back to the Los Angeles River. It will truly make us, make us a great, great international city. And so with the LA River and with the redevelopment of our waterfront in San Pedro, we really will begin to attract tourism. We'll really begin to give people a good feeling about this city. Thank you to Ed and thanks to all who worked hard on this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, it's an honor to have as my seatmate on my right, Ed Reyes, and on my left, Greg Smith. But this is a wonderful moment because the living legacy for Mr. Reyes is happening here right now. And when we all go beyond this moment, there will be this river revitalized. Remember when Richard Katz was running for office and he said we should take the LA River and make it a freeway? Thank God we didn't do that. For all my life, as I've gone by the river and I see this concrete, I'm wondering what is going on here? Who did it and why did they do it? Well, obviously, every time you remove that concrete, you're letting Mother Nature nurture that river and bring in the most incredible wildlife and everything else. And we in the 11th District, which has the Biona Creek and goes into the ocean, as we go forward with the LA River, will deal with all the tributaries because the watershed for all of us is critical. I think also, by getting rid of that concrete, we're breathing and the water is being infiltrated into the ground, and our aquifers are repremishing the water. So it's a water conservation strategy besides utilization and nurturing of the river. So applaud Mr. Reyes and everybody on the council for their leadership over the last half a dozen years to make this a reality. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zine is our next speaker. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I just want to also commend, he's smiling, Ed, that's good. I want to commend you. I know the dedication. Now, Mr. Alacon's going to go beat you up now, what? I just wanted to commend you for the dedication you put forward in this, for the cornfields that you turned into something positive. You got great vision. And I know that it's going to start out in the West San Fernando Valley in my district. I've been to Asia where they did a similar project, and in Reno, they've done a project, and it works. It brings life to that area. So we've turned a flood control, the concrete flood control, into something that is living, it's real, and everything that goes in that flood control, or that only river, ends up in the ocean. So the plan that you have, and you and I discussed it, and I know the research you put into this is tremendous, so while the department, the engineering, Gary, you're going to take all the credit, it was Ed's idea, not your idea. Not Gary Moore, Ed's idea, Ed Reyes. So I just want to commend you and congratulate you. I know it starts out in the West San Fernando Valley. We've had some meetings with some of the neighborhood folks. They're excited about it, and I think it's going to be a while, obviously, till it's all complete. But when we look at the water that generates, that goes through, and now it just gets wasted and ends up in the ocean, we will do something positive with it. So, Ed, hats off, congratulations. Another project, like the cornfields, that materialized to a wonderful project along with the vision that you have, because you've got that mentality of planning and thinking and making it happen. So congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Reyes? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to, is anybody outside that wanted to close?
He wants to be the last speaker. I pressed my button.
Oh, I'm sorry. It came up a second time because I think I was on your place. So let's go, Ms. Gruel, then Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Alacon, and we'll wind up with Mr. Reyes. Ms. Gruel.
And I just want to stand up and, Mr. Alacon's comments, maybe you may need to get a report. The county of Los Angeles has been working on, particularly in my district and some of the neighborhoods that necessarily are not in the wealthier parts, of looking at ways, they've begun construction near Victory Boulevard, and we're looking at other areas up towards Hanson Dam and going up to even the Salantunga areas in which we have invested some dollars. Because I think that, as we read this, it says the LA River Revitalization Plan, which is something that we made a determination at the time to start with the LA River. And so the model that you see today is the LA River. There's lots of things we would like to see happen in the San Fernando Valley. We're working with the Bureau of Engineering on a lot of the watershed issues up in that community, and I think welcome your participation here. I'm not sure in Sacramento whether or not you were able to get some money for the tributaries while we were up there, or you can help us now from your relationship with the Assembly and Senate, because we've seen a lot of the money that's come forward, I think Mr. Reyes has gotten from Congress that has come down for the LA River. And welcome that participation, because I think we all agree that all parts of the city should have that kind of river access, tributary access, for both water qualities we talked about, as well as greening in the city of Los Angeles. And so I think it's an exciting time in the city that we have all of us who are up here standing saying we want to have more into our communities and our neighborhoods. But there are some exciting things happening on the Tuhanga Wash side in some of the areas that I know I represent, and probably will even connect up into your areas as well, Mr. Alacon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. And in regards to Mr. Alacon's comments, and I know you haven't been in this chamber for a few years, but this council and this city's made major commitments to the Hanson Dam area and your community. We've put a lot of money into the park up there, a lot of money in the recreation facility up there, and certainly in the youth museum, the children's museum. So there's been a lot of effort to really energize that community. I understand you want to add this to what Mr. Reyes has done. The problem I think you have is that Mr. Reyes came in with an idea, a vision, of what we could do along a river corridor. And that river corridor, while eventually does connect to Hanson Dam, connects to Port Somit District up in Chatsworth and the hills and et cetera, we had to concentrate with the resources we had on the vision he had to begin the process along the river. And that's what he did. Came in with a vision, said, "Let's go forward with this and do the best we can, and then hopefully it will spread." Ms. Hahn has done the same thing in the harbor. She had a vision. And I think the best thing served, Mr. Alacon, would be to, for you to come in with your vision of what you want to do to bootstrap your community, and I think you'd find a lot of support here, particularly from Ms. Gruel, Cardenas, Zine, and myself, who are going to fight for anything we can to support a Valley Council member to get our fair share. But we have been making major commitments to that community, and I think the commitment would be here. But the proper way really is for you to come forward with your vision, what you want us to do, rather than trying to in any way impede what Mr. Reyes has done for the last six years here. And I think that'd be the more appropriate way, but if Mr. Reyes is willing to accept that, I'll go along with that. But I want to support what Mr. Reyes has done. Pardon me? I said, I just said it, as long as he's willing to go along with that, I'll accede to that and go along. I think the better way would have been to do it the other way. But if Mr. Reyes is willing to do that, I'll go along with that, because I do not want to impede in any way the vision that he has brought to this city, which will be a project which will last for 100 years in this city, and it is worthy of our support today.
Mr. Alacon.
Look, Ed, I didn't come here to patronize folks. There is a blight in the Northeast San Fernando Valley that needs much more than the resources that have been dedicated to date. I don't know what's been going on in the last 8.3, eight years and three months since I left, but what I can tell you is we have more to fix. My district is a community of needs, and nobody's going to shut me up because I express those needs. I'm going to continue to express those needs. Mr. Reyes has graciously accepted the motion that I offered. It doesn't impede the process whatsoever. It enhances the future potential of this project. With regard to the report of the county, let me remind you, I don't need to look at a report to know that the county promised me $50 million when I was elected in 1993 to fix the waterways along Tuhanga Avenue, and then reneged, pulled the money, and threw them into some other project in some other district. And a man was killed on Tuhanga when a sinkhole opened up the size of this council chamber. They're still fixing that road. The road is still blocked. And no, I'm not going to applaud the county for delaying the $50 million expenditure, which is now a $5 billion expenditure.
I wouldn't suggest it.
Yeah. So let's get real, folks. This is a wonderful project. Let's build on it. But let's not, let's not suggest that we fixed all the world's problems around this. We've got tributaries that need some attention. You know, I remember my dad telling me how he carried his grandmother, his mother, across the North Hollywood area of the tributary before Hanson Dam was built, when the flood hit in 1938. I know this, I know this river as well as anybody, and I think that we deserve to look at those communities that could benefit the most, that have great economic development opportunities. And in this case, the master plan doesn't incorporate an area of great opportunity, not just my, the tributary that goes into the 7th Council District, but many of the other tributaries, including the extension of the tributary in Mr. Reyes's district, which he's well aware of. So I'm just trying to build on this. I've asked the Bureau of Engineering to come back with a report to say, "How do we get there?" Let's include that in the vision. Let's not stop now. Let's move forward with the energy that we've created and build on that.
Mr. Weisar.
Thank you. On the lighter side, there's some fish. There's some fish that were taken from the river, little Antonio and little Ed. How are they, how are they doing?
Mr. Hyman is here.
Please hold my time.
I'm sad to say that as a goldfish, they did well.
You did well as a goldfish.
But they're now gone.
Well, may we take some more fish and improve the water quality there as well, because I think that's a big goal of this river as well. So thank you.
Those are our canaries.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes to conclude.
Thank you, councilmembers. This is a good day. And again, it's an honor for me to be with all of you, because each one of us has taken on a role, a specific issue in the city. And I don't have a list of what everyone's been doing, but just as a snapshot, when Commissioner Smith is talking about new ways to deal with recycling and our waste, that adds to the quality of life for our future. When Councilmember Rosendahl speaks to the pressure we feel on housing, you know, on and on down the list, each one of you, Commissioner Hahn on the beachfront, actually giving us an international setting where we can really talk about international city with a part that we deserve. I mean, each one of you has done excellent work, and I appreciate and truly grateful for your support. But like Deborah Weintraub and Gary, and looking at the politics of 15 different fiefdoms, where the mayor who oversees everything and the energy that it brings, and understanding that this is a multi-jurisdictional effort. This is one major waterway. It was never intended to approach all the social ills, to solve all the world's problems. And if our senators and our Assembly Members in general attended all the meetings, they would know that perhaps, maybe, we had more money to do more with to this report. But we don't. So now we build on that. And I look forward to our Councilman Alacon with his knowledge and how we penetrate the state infrastructure and how we get these resources, so that we can do with all the issues you're raising, Councilmember, and look at this in a very positive way. Now, for me, the true Now, for me, the true joy is seeing the possibility of all the kids, all the families, all the experiences they're going to have, and knowing how grass feels. As corny as that sounds, there are thousands and thousands of kids who don't have the ability to touch grass because they're confined to their stairwells, to their fire escapes, because there are no playgrounds in their neighborhood. There are hundreds of families who can't afford to go to Disneyland, who can't afford to go down the freeway to enjoy a nice day in the open. But here, they can walk to the Riverway. They can enjoy the bike path, these amphitheaters. This plan speaks to the economic development opportunity of this great city. Understanding we have a regional waterway to contend with, this regional watershed deserves several more millions of dollars just to understand how it behaves, to allow us to maintain safety during flood seasons in our great city. Millions of dollars more. We would do it an injustice if we even started to pretend that this was the watershed plan. It is not. It's the riverway we call the Los Angeles River. That's all. But with it comes directives to create new entities of accountability, both in the private sector and the public sector. It speaks to gentrification. It deals with the fears that exist in my community and many others, who may be, they feel that perhaps this could be another Malibu where you can't enjoy the waterway because someone blocks their access. The planning department has instilled the whole unit just to deal with these planning land use issues. So when the water begins to disintegrate, evaporate, or be consumed by other cities and counties, what are we going to do as a metropolis who has a real demand for water? Those are critical issues of life and death, not to sound dramatic, but our grandchildren are going to hold accountable for what we didn't do today. I ask for an I vote, a unanimous I vote. I'm absorbing the amendment from Councilmember Alacon with the caveat that that motion go to my committee as the Chair of Ad hoc River. If he is okay with that amendment, then we can move forward and start folding in all the resources we need to make this truly a life-changing experience for our kids. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And thank you, everybody, for that debate, and also for the thousands of Angelinos who came out for the workshop sessions, which was a big part of writing this plan. With that, if there's no objection to the amendment, just to remind everybody that has to be accepted by the entire council as a friendly amendment. See? Okay, we will refer that to Ad hoc River without objection. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Without objection, we'll send that forthwith. We have item 30, I think, has been requested out of order. I'm sorry. Since it was a communication, we did have a public hearing in committee, but since it was a communication from the chair, we'll reopen to, in order to take public comment. That was not full quorum in committee. So with that, our first speaker is Joyce Dillard. My apologies, we switched, we switched presidents midway, midstream. No pun intended. Go ahead, Ms. Dillard.
Well, it seems you already voted, but I'm very disappointed in this plan, because there has been a lot of time and energy, and I'm glad Ed Reyes raised up the whole plan for people to see. I brought it with me to show that it's just not a one or page two document in the EIR's hundreds of pages also. But really, you're dealing with public safety, and you're dealing with long-term planning when you deal with issues like this. And it's really missing. It's not only the watershed, it's water supply, it's water quality. We've been through disasters. We were through one yesterday with a fire. And disasters happen fast. You have panic and chaos. But there's nothing in this plan that really addresses that. Part of the problem is a 50-year flood plane. Some of the state plans are basing theirs on 200-year. You want to put development in, yet you don't worry about water contamination, you don't worry about the tributaries that was brought up, or the water tables. And this is critical for the costs and the quality of life of people. I'm disappointed in that you had a housing, it's a housing plan, obviously, that you had a presentation by less center, because they cut out the public two years ago. They used to have open research seminars. They've now shut it. And if you go to the urban growth, you find out people want to live in the County of Riverside and commute. But you've cut out, you've negated the will of the people in this, because you're setting up foundations, you're setting up nonprofits. You're not pulling the people in when you need to pull the people in. You're not letting them have their voice, their vote, or anything like that. Joint Powers authorities are governmental, but they're a hybrid, and they're difficult for citizens. So do I think this is a good plan? No, I think it's a good housing development plan, if that's what you want. I think you have no consideration for the people, public safety, state laws, or anything like that. And in the long run, it's going to cost you a lot. Because as city-elected officials, people come back to you in time of disaster. They want to see what you can do. You know, everything's nice and good economic development, but I've already had a representative of land developer want to trade floor, trade park space for floor-area ratio, and we have air rights, I understand, in plain nouns, for density. But it's not the will of the people. And I think with all this spent and all these meetings, you need to do the will of the people and water. Thank you.
Zuma Dog is our next speaker.
First, don't you have to reopen this and then do?
Go ahead, Mr. Dog. Please give your testimony right now.
Okay, well, we'll take this up later. Okay, well, hate the rain on the parade, but I got a call from my bad computer voice at the Pueblos on the east side. Here's a few things. I hope there's not going to be any high-density housing. Is this, is this going to be a project where there's going to be high-density housing eventually along it? That's something I'd like to know, because I hope not, because we don't have proper infrastructure for that. Also, you talk about water. There's a lot of high-density going up around here, and the Delta River is at risk. If you read the L.A. Times, the Delta is at risk of being shut off. Then you're not going to be able to supply water for all these projects. The CRA is involved. That means a shady as hell right off the bat. Bond money involved. Oh, let's go to some of these things here. Richard Alacon, I like what you had to say, the valley and a lot of areas are very upset about this type of thing here. Revised existing street design standards. Okay, that paves the way for allowing high-density to come on in there. We need the community assessment needs. Here we have something. General funds. Okay, the, we're gonna, we're gonna have to take general fund contributions for consultants. Oh, that paves the way for shadiness right there. So by the way, it also says additional funding is expected to come from existing local and state. Then you got bond money. You got to watch out for that with the grants. I'd like to say any grants that's going to nonprofits involved in this, please, you got to run an audit through Laura Chick first before any money's being used for this project. Let's see, again, so we, I only got 35 seconds left, but of course, we can't have high-density housing along this project with no infrastructure. We got water supply problems, and we've... This whole thing's put me in overload, y'all. This whole thing's put me in overload. And so everybody likes a park, y'all, but they don't like high-density that puts the water supply at risk with no infrastructure, using general funds for things that's being taken from other projects around the city, and outweigh the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lewis McAdams is our next speaker. Thank you.
The great land use attorney, George Milston, once told me that the most effective thing you can say is, "I agree with the staff report." Twenty, twenty years ago, when Friends of the Los Angeles River began, one of our more outrageous ideas was that our work would be done when the Steelhead Run returned to the Los Angeles River. If you look at some of the finer points of this master plan, you'll see the beginnings of planning for the Steelhead to return to the Los Angeles River. I can think of no more thrilling thing to me than for the two-legged creatures that have dominated this area for the last several hundred years to begin to look to the four-leggeds, to the flying, and to the swimming creatures that we share this basin with, and that we are welcoming them back. And as we welcome them back, we're welcoming all of our own fellow humans to the Los Angeles River, to the Greenway, from the mountains to the sea, and to a prophecy. The City Council today with this vote, I believe, has taken a great step into the future of this basin. And I thank you very much, and I congratulate you on your work.
Thank you very much, Lewis. Irma Munoz is our next speaker. After that will be Carrie Purvahidi, and then Barbara Romero.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Aliencia de los Pueblos del Río, the Alliance of the Communities Along the River. To start with, we'd like to thank the champion of this plan, this Councilman Ed Reyes. We have worked with his office, and we'd like to also thank, thank the staff of the Bureau of Engineers, who opened their offices to us. We're the organization who are very concerned about the folks, the voiceless folks, the folks that we didn't think were going to be engaged in the meetings and the conversations and the focus groups who live near and around the river, focusing mostly on the immigrant communities, holding three meetings. And I have to tell you, Councilman Reyes, when you first talked to us about the river, we were somewhat non-believers. And then as time went by, we became believers, and now we are become dreamers with you. The community, when we talked to them about the river, they, most of them from Guatemala or Mexico, other parts of Latin America, would laugh at me and say, "How can you even imagine a river there? You need to come and visit our country so that you know what a river really looks like with fish and trees and flora and fauna. This is an impossible task." And so we took the criticism, we took the laughter, but as we started to engage people and started telling them about the possibilities, they decided they wanted to be part of the process. And it was very tough. The toughest community was Canoga Park. Canoga Park, because the folks there feel that they have no right to an opinion, that whatever they have to say means nothing to them. But now they are engaging. We do support the plan. We think the work is just beginning. We think it's been a long process, and we'd like to salute and commend not just the Bureau of Engineers, but all the consultants who did listen, as well as the councilman's staff, which I think is very important. I don't think there's a greater project that's going to have the biggest impact in bringing the city of Los Angeles, its communities, its neighborhoods, and its residents as the Los Angeles River. Regardless of where you live, how far you live from the river, this is going to bring us together. Because in the future is what we need. We need more green space.
Thank you.
We need to appreciate and love nature, and hopefully, this will bring about some more positive things within all our communities.
Thank you very much. Carrie Purvahidi?
Good afternoon. I'm Carrie Purvahidi, Deputy Director with the California High Speed Rail Authority, and I'm pleased to be here to address your counsel. First of all, on behalf of the High Speed Rail Authority, I'd like to congratulate the city and all those who participated in putting together this extraordinary vision for revitalizing the L.A. River. This is a great project for the local community neighborhoods, the city of L.A., California, and Western United States, as it culminates a long-term desire of hard-working residents of a diverse set of communities to join together for one great cause, to make their environment a better place to live. That is what great projects are all about, to improve the quality of our life now and in the future. The California High Speed Rail Authority is also interested in improving the quality of life for the residents of California. We are at or near capacity on our freeways and airports. We will continue to do so as the planned future expansions will immediately be absorbed by the projected growth in California, which is expected to exceed 55 million by 2050. To assist in responding to these future transportation needs, the California High Speed Rail Authority is proposing to build a 700-mile statewide high-speed train system that connects the major metropolitan areas of California, and is able to carry over 100 million passengers annually by 2030. The authority has certified a program EIR/ EIS on multiple alignments in Southern or Northern California. We see our project, as well as the L.A. River project, as being coexisting and being very, working together. The potential the High Speed Rail project brings to the city of L.A., and specifically in meeting the goals of the L.A. River Revitalization Plan, is to remove, remove future rail constraints on existing rail corridors to improve the access to the L.A. River, to provide mitigation funding to, for use in implementing the L.A. River Master Plan, and to provide cooperative and combined coordination with the federal and state agencies. We appreciate the fact that the L.A. River Revitalization Plan program EIR/ EIS did include language regarding the High Speed Rail Authority. We wish to continue to work with the committee and the council on our future for High Speed Rail. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Romero is our final speaker.
I am Barbara Romero. I'm the Director of Urban Projects for the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. We're a joint Powers Authority of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I'm here also to convey my message from Joe Edmondson, who could not be here this morning, well, now afternoon. But we just wanted to support the recommendation by, and the efforts by Councilman Reyes to adopt the River Master Plan. We have been working on the L.A. River and its tributaries for over 10 years, and we have over 10 river park projects on the river now. But those, and we've been working with those on with Northeast Trees, Los Angeles Conservation Corps, and Friends of the L.A. River. Friends of the L.A. River kind of advocated for the revitalizing of the river over 20 years ago. We came on after like 10, 11 years ago, working on this effort. And the county adopted their River Master Plan in '96. And we use that plan as a way to, for landscaping guidelines and for signage. So we look at that opportunity and are delighted and excited to work with the city on the plan, because it is just a plan at this point. While we're excited about, I working with the different council members in identifying the feasibility of the different projects, and offering our expertise in park planning, because we see that there's a role for the advocacy, the outreach, the park planners, and that every community, it's going to look a little different. And if it's going to be housing, then we also, we're going to advocate for, what's our mission? We're going to advocate for that there has to be some river frontage. We're also going to advocate for, obviously, how do we preserve the habitat and, and provide public access? Because the bottom line is, if we don't provide public access on the river, then we're not going to implement the vision that has been put up front. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate it. Let's open the roll, reconsideration of the vote. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And if we can open the roll on the item again. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. There's no objection. We'll send that forthwith. Thank you. We next have a special presentation, and Mr. Parks, and I think wanted to present a little thing special on item number 30, so recognize Mr. Parks first to begin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask the ITA staff to come up. Colleagues, this is something that, as we move forward on attempting to make council meetings and a variety of our committee meetings more accessible to the public, and we've heard over and over that many people would like to watch it, but they can't figure out what the timing is on their issue, just as we hear people come here and say, "I've sat for three hours waiting for item 30 to come up." And so the issue today is to talk about how ITA and the City Clerk has gone out and found a way through the video streaming to allow people to have our meetings on demand by subject area or item. And so let me ask the new general manager, and then Frank Martinez, to give us an overview. And then also, there's going to be a demonstration, so that you're able to show your staff and also the community how they may use this new equipment.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Parks and Councilman Garcetti for their leadership and support with this initiative. I'd also like to acknowledge our partner, the City Clerk's Office, for their leadership and commitment for bringing this initiative forward. The live and on-demand streaming videos being rolled out today is just the start of utilizing this technology for improving access to government information and services. We look forward to expanding this service to include City View Channel 35's programming, audio on-demand for council committees, as well as piloting on-demand videos for neighborhood council board meetings. Thank you.
Frank Martinez, Los Angeles City Clerk. I'd just like to remind the council that this is one in a series of initiatives that we have implemented with our partners, the Information Technology Agency, over the last several years. Community impact statements from neighborhood councils, off-site video testimony, online council file documents, and now the live and on-demand streaming video. I would like to thank not only the ITA staff, but our systems I would like to thank not only the ITA staff, but our Systems Group headed by Greg Allison and our Council and Public Services Division headed by Claudia Dunn. In addition to public access, this technology also will improve and enhance staff research capabilities as well. So with that, I think we'd like to go ahead and move forward into the demonstration. If you could attend to your screen or the overhead projection, and we'll take you through it, and Claudia Dunn will narrate the demonstration.
Good afternoon. Is it on? Okay. Good afternoon. If you either can watch on your screens in front of you, council members, or on the plasma screen above, I will navigate through the site. The public, or yourselves, or your offices would go, enter the system through the lacity.org website, and if you follow the mouse, if you can see it, you would click down to Council Meetings Live and On Demand. Before I click on that, though, I want to point out down below that we do have the Budget and Finance Committee meetings live and on demand as well. So anyone could go back, City Department or the public, to look at the budget hearings that have happened very recently and see what's transpired there. But I will, for purposes of the demonstration, click on the Council Meetings Live and On Demand. That will bring you to the screen on Council Meetings, and we'll click on the first link, which is Live and On Demand Video. This is what we're demonstrating here. And it's coming. Okay. This will bring you to that page, Live and On Demand Council Meetings. Now, I'll navigate down a bit. It points out some information relating to folks clicking on the video on podcasting over on the right. If you scroll down, you'll see Currently in Session. Anyone can click on the current meeting that's in session here. They can also click for the Spanish simulcast as well, here, at the same time. I don't, I hope you can see the mouse pointing. If you scroll down to Upcoming City Council Meetings, it will show the upcoming meetings and basically just show the agenda, so that's posted. Then if you go down to On Demand City Council Meetings, you can click on the current council, you can click on any past meeting, and these meetings are listed for a 12-month period. They're archived for the public for 12 months. We can click on any meeting, basically, and look at the agenda, which is right here. Go back. We can click on the journal for that meeting, which, let me go down to a journal I know is up, which is basically the council actions that were taken at that meeting. And then you can finally, you could click on a video. So I'll click on a video. That'll bring up the video for the council meeting on May 4th, last Friday. It does take a bit of time for it to buffer, and the videos will actually start. I'm going to turn it down here. The videos will actually start at the conclusion of the prior Channel 35 simulcast, so.
I recognize those council members.
So what I'm going to do is take us more to the beginning of the meeting. So I'll push it up a little bit. You can move it up a little bit. There we go. The meeting's starting. Push it up a little bit more. And we'll see a portion of the council meeting. It has started earlier, but it'll basically, that's one way to jump. What's really key with this feature is that you can go to this Jump To menu down here, and you can go to any portion of the meeting and jump to it, and it'll bring you to that point of the video. So item number 17, for example. Here's item number 17. Comes right up. Okay. We go. Another thing I would point out is, on the right side of the screen, you'll see the agenda for the meeting. You can, as with any agenda online, you can scroll down to the item. You can click on the hyperlink, which will bring up the online documents that are currently posted for that item, so anyone could get to those and print them out. They're all PDF documents. Okay. I'll go back to the search page, the main page. Something that's really interesting in this is that you can search. If you're not quite sure what meeting you're looking for, and you're looking for a specific item in a prior meeting, you could type in some keywords right here on Search Archives. So I'm going to type in something that was recent called Culture Clash, was the council meeting last Friday. So I'm going to type that in, see if it'll bring it up for me. What I'll see here is everything where the word "culture clash" appeared in this presentation. Because it had culture, I didn't put it in parentheses, it shows other things. But basically, the meeting from Friday is there. I can click on either Presentations, or I can click on the caption, because it searches the Closed Caption menu as well for those words. So you can go either way in. So if I click on Presentations, for example, it'll bring me straight to the video and
Come forward, please.
to the point where Councilmember Cardenas gave a presentation to Culture Clash. Okay? And you can do that for just about anything. You could go to Adopt a Pet, you could go to the L.A. River, any discussions.
Culture Clash is comprised of.
There you go. And then, you can back out into the archives and do another search.
Is that it? Well, you can see there's quite a bit of capability with this system, allowing people to get directly to the item on the meeting that they are interested in and see actual footage, get the actual content of the discussion. So that's very valuable for both the public as well as staff doing research. So again, we will continue to improve public access to the legislative process through a series of these developments, and we hope to be in a position to continue to do that next year as well.
All right. Well, there's other people on the queue. You're no longer a union rep anymore. Let me just ask, on the issue of the program, can we now get access to committee meetings that are in a facility that are being taped? So if we're in one of our rooms with the tape on 35, can that also be brought up on the system?
It has to be being filmed by 35.
In the sense of 35, so if we had something, like you said, budget filmed here, also, do we have access to some of the committee, not committee, but commission meetings that are being taped now? Would they also be accessible?
Yeah, as long as we film them through 35, then we can digitize them, and then we can access them. And in fact, the budget hearings that you just held are in fact available right now, and we can go back and look at those just like we did just now.
Yeah. I just want to say thanks to both of you. I think this started from just a brief conversation in the hallway at a National League of Cities meeting, where somebody was telling us about the potential, and you went way beyond what they were doing. They basically set up where their council meetings were over, they would do a vignette on each subject, so people could get the sense of what's going on in council, and then determine if they wanted to go to the whole video. But here, you've given people much more ability to be very precise and deal with it on demand. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I rise, having been the cable guy for many years, to say this is the most democratic, constituent-friendly strategy that anybody has put together in the nation, and I applaud you both very much for quickly acting on that. Democracy is all about information and access. The more we empower the people, the stronger the democracy becomes. And what this does now is give person an opportunity to reflect on an issue, to go back to an issue, to look at the live dynamism of it, to go into the library and look at stuff. It truly gives us the opportunities that we didn't have before and becomes an incredible tool in making the democracy work. Time Warner is now the only cable company in town. Where are they with their on-demand opportunities, and how would this local programming fit into Time Warner? And have they cooperated with you beyond just the Channel 35 in helping us go even further?
Well, I can say, since this is on my agenda, this is my 13th day, so I haven't had a chance yet to meet with Time Warner, but with Mark Wolf's help, we are planning on doing that.
Because their on-demand business and their local programming, which of course, I'm urging them to create a real public affairs channel that the city doesn't have with the local media who do soundbite journalism, which doesn't inform anybody about anything, but a real opportunity for substantive discussions, and tying this into that will even make it that much more effective. Great. Thank you again. I applaud you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and want to thank Mr. Parks. It's been a joy to work with him on this issue. And I got to say, you know, somebody was saying earlier that we praise each other too much around here, but you've come a long way since you figured out how to turn on the computers a couple of years ago. And now you text page, you're working on video on demand. I mean, you've got yourself a Pearl BlackBerry. You've really, you are proof that we can, as we grow older, become wiser. And this is something that's been great. We worked closely with Mr. Parks and with ITA on this as well, looking at the audio portion. Another colleague was just saying, anybody who actually uses the podcast function of listening to our city council meetings while jogging or anything else should probably be committed. But then again, I'm one of the people who, you know, when I get into my car and they're playing on Tuesday night, Santa Monica City Council Meetings, I can't stop listening to it, even though that's my day job, too. So I know there are those of us out there that love the civic enterprise so much that this will help us more directly get to the information we need, the information we want. And to quote one last colleague, who's not here because he's out there still helping the fire effort, Mr. LeBonde always says, what, Ms. Han? That's right. Information is knowledge is power. And I won't say we're all angels in the city of angels, but I will say that this is something that clearly moves us towards the forefront. We've come in third place a few years running, and I know we're going to sit down soon and talk about technology. Third place, three years running for our city's website nationally, of all cities. And I've been gunning for first place for a long time. I think it's, Corpus Christi keeps getting first place. They must know the judges very well, but I think this will help propel us. We have the most permits ever filled online through our e-permit system with Building and Safety. We're number one in the country with that. We've been looking at trying to spruce up a lot of our technological offerings. I know a number of council members have blogs. We're looking at e-democracy and how we can, I know we're going to be talking about this in Rules and Elections Committee, what sort of things we can use technology to help people get more engaged around elections as well. And this is a great step forward, both the video and the audio portions that we'll be able to do this. So thank you, Mr. Parks, for becoming a technological leader, and it makes us proud to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, anything else?
No, that's it. This is just a presentation. No vote needs to be taken.
No vote necessary. Well, it's nice to have you come forward and not have to vote, because we'd vote to support you anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number three, and that was call special for cards from the public.
Item number three, card from the public. We have to go to our Valley operation. Card from the public from the Valley. Miriam Vogler. There's no one there? They left. All right. So let's take item number three. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 26, call special for cards from the public.
Number 26. Carrie. Pavahadi. Is there Carrie Pavahadi here? All right. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
31, call special for cards from the public.
Arnold Sachs. Mr. Sachs is here.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. Regarding renaming a section of 17th Street to Johnny Cochran Vista, in, I just have some very deep regrets about that. I think if that were to be initiated, then the city council, in all due fairness, should consider these alternatives or these additions. They should also have incompetent city prosecutors left turn lanes. And since most of Johnny Cochran's fame, in my opinion, this is strictly my opinion, comes from his work that he did on the O.J. Simpson defense case, there should be a, why was O.J. driving around L.A. with a gun to his head, right turn lane? And then, there might also be a, how did a private attorney get to leave O.J.'s house carrying a briefcase, which contents were not examined, carpool lane? And least but not last, last but not least, we should also include, if the glove don't fit, you can't convict stop signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. On that item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item number 46, call special for cards from the public.
That's to our Valley operation, Miriam Vogler. I understand she's not there. We're checking with the Valley City Hall. She's not there. On item 46, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item, please.
Item 58, call special for cards from the public.
That's Mr. Zuma Dog. Mr. Zuma Dog is going to pass on 58. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Uh, next item, please.
Item number 66, call special for card from the public.
We have two cards, both from Zuma Dog. On item 66.
Ain't gonna pass on 66, y'all, because that's about track maps. And if you want to see what I'm saying, you can go home and podcast it, you can download it, you can stream it. Thank you so much, lacity.org, for putting the Zuma Dog Show a year's worth, yeah, yeah. Now, let's talk about the biggest problem I see in the city right now. We got these track maps. I've been telling you about them. They're popping up like psychedelic mushrooms in the 70s, y'all. And the problem with these track maps, there's several things that's supposed to happen. First of all, I wonder if all these track maps that we're going to be voting yes on today went through neighborhood councils? They're supposed to? I hope they have. There's vacancy rates in the city that must be adhered to. I hope everybody checked to see that. I hope the EIR reports were done, and I hope that there's infrastructure around these track maps. Let me see right here what else we got about the track maps, y'all. Item number 66. Try driving down Lincoln Boulevard in Bill Rosendahl's district. That's the effect of too many track maps. It's gridlock on Lincoln Boulevard. You're going to have to change the bus routes. You're putting so many track maps in the city. You drive down Lincoln Boulevard, you have to change the bus routes. The bus can't stay on time, not because the drivers are lazy, because the buses can't even drive. You're going to need to put more buses, or you're going to have to extend the amount of time in between them. Track maps, it's the density thing. Skag, what are you doing in the city? And city council, by the way, I saw the real skag numbers. You're hiding behind that number, saying that they're making you build all this housing. Zuma Dog don't buy it, y'all. My back computer said these numbers don't tabulate, y'all. Anyway, track maps, again, run them through neighborhood councils. You need more infrastructure. You're ignoring vacancy rates and all these things, y'all. Let's see, have they? Total assessments, plus you file motions for things, and then you just ignore the motions and say. There was a track map approval meeting in Wendy Gruhl's district of Valley Village. She put a motion in to have a traffic impact study, and they said, "Oh, well, you know, we didn't do the study yet, but it doesn't matter. Traffic's going to get so bad. Anyway, it's not going to matter, so we're just going to do it." Well, why do I motion for the study if you're not going to listen to it?
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Dog. Next item, please.
Council needs to vote on that.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Wednesday, May 30th, and Friday, June 1st, and Tuesday, June 31st. That's for personal business. The other two are for city business, and those all meet council policy.
All right. Those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Friday, June 15th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Rosendahl is excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, May 22nd, to leave at noon, and Tuesday, May 15th, to leave at noon for city business. Those meet council policy.
All right. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Weisart requests to be excused Wednesday, May 16th, and Friday, June 1st, for city business. Those meet council policy.
That excuse is also granted.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused Wednesday, May 30th, for personal business. That meets council policy.
That is, that excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Han requests to be excused Tuesday, May 22nd, for city business. That meets council policy.
Councilwoman Han is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay. Announcements, colleagues. Just let me reiterate again to residents. Sorry? Oh, we do have a closed session. We have a closed session item, so we'll come back for announcements, folks. Clerk, the clerk fooled us. Clerk, the clerk fooled us. Sorry, it's a reject? Somebody want to move it?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Zine second. If nobody wishes to go in closed session, anybody want object to holding the vote in open session? If not, we'll go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, that rejection is accepted. Now is the time for announcements. Ms. Han?
Just want to remind everybody, we we it was mentioned earlier in the in the meeting, but everyone's invited to come down to the waterfront in San Pedro on tomorrow, Saturday, all day and into the evening for art on the waterfront. Be a great opportunity to bring your family down there. A lot of great artists and food and music, and it's on the beautiful main channel of the Port of Los Angeles. Come on down. Not till September.
Ms. Alakon.
I had previously announced that the Education and Neighborhood Council meeting would be on May 11th, particularly considering the motion I introduced relative to establishing the possibility Los Angeles City could establish charter schools. But I wanted to announce that we have rescheduled that issue to be heard at our June 5th community meeting at 9:00 a.m. in City Hall in room 1060. So for those who might have attended the May 11th meeting, that item will not be considered at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to announce that the West Angeles Community Development Corporation is offering two summer internships in the area of project manager and market analyst. And for anyone interested in that, they are asking that their resumes come in by June the 4th. Contact number is 323-751-3440. Also, on May the 26th, the 8th District is going to be involved with the Sempra to deal with a energy fair at the Jesse Brewer Park on Vermont, an exposition from 9:30 to 11:30, and certainly invite the public there. And then Lonnie, the Los Angeles Neighbor Initiative, is having their fifth annual community forum on May the 17th, 8 to 2:30, at the Davison Center at USC. And then finally, the LA Urban Policy Roundtable with Mr. Earl Fari Hutchinson is having a reception for His Excellency Bernardo Alvarez Herrera, the Venezuelan Ambassador to the United States, on May the 11th, 6 to 7:30 in Limerick Park at Lucy Florence, 3351 West 43rd Street.
Thank you. Again, to residents of Los Feliz who have been evacuated for the fires. We are allowing folks back into their homes for emergency needs, though the evacuation order still stands. Again, we want to thank the Los Angeles City firefighters, 300, as well as 150 firefighters from neighboring municipalities, from the county. We had all sorts of local cities who came to our mutual aid, and we really appreciate that as we continue to fight the fire in Griffith Park. Does anybody have any adjourning motions? If I could please ask everybody in council chambers to rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of the grandmother of my assistant chief deputy, Courtney Chesla Torres. Her grandmother passed away, Mary Sando, on May 2nd at the age of 84. Mary grew up in Saginaw, Michigan, and was raised on a farm with her eight siblings. At the young age of 14, she left home to make it on her own, and she did. She met and married the love of her life, Harold, when she was 20. Hal passed away two and a half years ago, leaving her brokenhearted. Together, they moved to California, raised five children, and built a very happy life full of family and love. While they will both be missed greatly, they have left behind a large and strong family, and their memory will live on. Mary survived by her five children, Carol, Doug, Debbie, Mary Jo, and Kathy, and their spouses, her sisters Martha and Hilda, and her brother Fred, as well as 10 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. Her services are scheduled for this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. at Faith Lutheran Church in Vista. And I know Courtney loved her grandmother very, very much and took every opportunity she could to go and visit with her. She visited with her not too long ago, and I know her grandmother was lucky to have someone like Courtney as a granddaughter. And I know Courtney will miss her very much.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We will next be in session.